Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for showing up this evening for our Planning Commission meeting. It is January the 28th. The time is 6:00 PM. At this time, we would call the meeting to order and with the Commissioners' motion, I would ask that you amend the agenda this evening so that we can vote for a Chair and Vice Chair for our Commission. I would entertain a motion at this time. All right, I have a motion. Motion in a second. Any discussion about that? All right. Any opposition? Hearing none, the motion carries. At this time, I would like to turn it over to our County Zoning Attorney to open the call for nominations.
Good evening, folks, and welcome back to Mr. Hardwick and to Mr. Bryant. You've returned for another test, so with an excellent agenda to start out your tenure. All right. We'll open nominations. Are there any nominations for, starting with the Vice Chair? There are nominations for the Vice Chair.
I'll nominate Bruce Ballard.
All right, there's a motion to nominate Bruce Ballard as Vice Chair. Motion's made and seconded. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, is there a motion to close the nominations? All right. Motion's made to close the nominations by Mr. Hardwick and seconded by Mr. Bryant. All right. Is there any discussion on the motion to close nominations?
I'll nominate Bruce Ballard.
All right, there's a motion to nominate Bruce Ballard as Vice Chair. Motion's made and seconded. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, is there a motion to close the nominations? All right. Motion's made to close the nominations by Mr. Hardwick and seconded by Mr. Bryant. All right. Is there any discussion on the motion to close nominations? Hearing none, nominations for Vice Chair are closed. All in favor of Mr. Ballard as Vice Chair of the Planning Commission, please signify by raising your hand. All right, that passes unanimously with Mr. Hardwick, Mr. Ballard, Ms. Upshaw, and Mr. Bryant voting in favor. Mr. Ballard is now your Vice Chair. All right. I'd like to open the floor for nominations for Chairman.
Would you like to nominate Ms. Upshaw?
I'll second.
All right, Ms. Upshaw's been nominated by Mr. Ballard, seconded by Mr. Bryant. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, is there a motion to close the nominations?
So moved.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, is there any objection to closing the nominations? They're closed. All right, everyone who's in favor of Ms. Upshaw as Chairman of the Planning Commission, please raise your right hand. All right, the vote is four to zero with Mr. Hardwick, Mr. Ballard, Ms. Upshaw, and Mr. Bryant voting in favor. That concludes our election of officers, and Ms. Upshaw, I will turn it over to you as Chairman.
Ms. Upshaw, would you like to take the chair position, and we'll be more than happy to rearrange the seats for you.
Okay. I've got an awful lot of stuff spread out over here. Everything from that and that.
Didn't see that one.
Ms. Upshaw, if you take now control of the meeting and call the first case.
Do I begin with a call to order, or have we already covered that? Okay, we'll start now with the old business.
All right, starting with old business, case number one, proposed text amendment to the Spalding County Code of Ordinance, Appendix 4, zoning Article 2, Section 202, adding definition of campground resort.
So Dr. Ledbetter, this was tabled from the December 5th meeting when it was originally proposed. We are doing another public hearing on it tonight, as well as the two following text amendments as well. The sign-up sheets were back there in the back. I think everybody signed up, I believe. Couple of points of clarification. There is no specific campground application as far as an actual location being considered at this time. Also, another point of clarification, the original text amendment, the standards for it have been revised quite a bit and strengthened and made stricter. One of the chief restrictions on it that we'll get to, and Item 3 here on old business, I'm sorry, Item 2, is that the fact that it cannot be located on a unpaved road, also a local road. There are several classifications of roads. Subdivision roads, local roads, collector roads, which are major roads, and arterial roads are like the highways. It cannot be located on any local or subdivision road or unpaved road, therefore it has to be a paved collector or arterial road. That greatly restricts the locations. It could be in the county now, so that's another point. Also, with this definition, the first item here, the Spalding County zoning code is a little bit curious in the fact that it says in the section, I can point out to you, that any use not specifically listed in the permitted uses section is not allowed. So you guys do what you want tonight, but if you do not approve a definition or add this to the code, standards don't really matter. It would not be allowed, period. So that's a point of consideration you need to make, as far as whether you approve a definition or not. Regardless, if you do approve a definition and standards and it's in the code, the campground such as this type would not ever be just outright allowed. It would have to come to this board and the Board of Commissioners always, if it's even approved and put in the code at all. So those are some points of clarification I want to make on this. We do have individual public hearing sign-in sheets for each Items 1, 2, and 3. It's up to the Board whether you want to combine those into one or have them separate. I think everybody that's signing to speak should be able to speak, but it's up to you whether you combine them into one or not.
Madam Chair, if you would like to combine all three together, I will go ahead and read all three of the cases and to the record.
That would be the will of the Board. Is that something that's agreeable to all of us? Yes, that'll be fine, thank you.
All right, case number two, proposed text amendment to the Spalding County Code of Ordinance, Appendix 4, zoning Article 2, Section 424, adding campground resort to supplemental use standards. Case number three, proposed text amendment to the Spalding County Code of Ordinance, Appendix 4, zoning Article 5, Section 503B, adding campground resort to AR1 permitted use requiring a special exception. Madam Chair, there are a number of people who have signed up this evening for public hearing, but it's at the will of the Board to open the public hearing at this time.
There's been a motion made to open and seconded. So we'll open the public hearing for all three of the cases as read.
All right. First up this evening, Mark Wallace. If you would, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, please. Please forgive me, there was a motion in a second, but no vote, Madam Chair.
That's correct, I was going to say.
Thank you. All in favor of taking all three cases together? All opposed? There are no opposition, so it passes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We'll have to vote on them separately.
Ready yet? Okay, I got the poll position. I used to be in racing, so I know what that means. Okay, so my name's Mark Wallace. I live at 5319 West MacIntosh Road. I have approximately 1,000 acres with three miles on the Flint, so I'm very involved with what's going on in our county. On the record, I'm definitely against the ordinance in and of itself. But saying that, if Spalding County decides to approve an ordinance, it needs to certain provisions that should follow the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan, as everybody knows, is a guideline for you guys to really consider certain things that should or shouldn't be in Spalding County. First page highlights that area are in direct conflict. And the main ones that I'm concerned with is the conservation area of the Flint River and other creeks are public or privately owned properties that are not suitable for development and are intended to be permanently protected for natural area conservation. That is very important, all right? The rural community character of AR1 is another important aspect of it. It basically states in the, that I gave you, that you've got certain qualifications that need to be adhered to as far as what needs to be in the rural character of Spalding County. And basically, the conflict against the campground in AR1 and AR2 does not follow the stated goal of the comprehensive plan of serving as a guide for future development or property informs rezoning decisions that are taken by the county. So the AR1 and AR2 that you're proposing in this ordinance should never be considered in that area of the county because it goes against your comprehensive plan, that is your Bible or your guidelines to allow future zoning in that area. The second page I gave to you is the recommended revisions. These revisions are most important, and we would probably be all on board with it if you made these changes. One of the major ones is commercial zoning. There's commercial zoning that needs to be adhered to along continuous, that's already zoned commercial, and that would not be a conflict in what your comprehensive plan has projected. The areas that you need to do this in really needs to be on state highways, 1692, 155, 362, 1941. They don't need to be on any kind of supplemental or secondary roads that are taking away from the rural character of the county. The last thing I want to talk to you about is a PEA map. This is very important, that you follow the guidelines on that last page with the map, that nothing should be done in that area that would conflict with ecological sensitive area that they're trying to protect. So that is important. Now, as a developer, you should not be able to benefit from trying to promote any kind of activity on the river. The river is very important to Spalding County. It's probably one of their most remote areas in county, back in that area. And they should not be able to rent boats or anything like that that would encourage people to get on the river and get hurt. There's a trussel on the property that's 100 years old. They float upriver, get on it, somebody's going to get hurt. Nobody should profit from that on the river. So in closing, if they choose to have an RV park, if y'all elect to do that, go by and look at Forest Glen Estates out there on 75 and 16. That's right on our property line. I don't think that's what we want, even though we have some verbiage in there about not allowing it to happen. It'll eventually be a permanent home for people because they got to make money. And you ain't going to make money because a resort in and of itself is a vacation spot. This Spalding County, I'm sorry, is not a vacation spot. I mean, you know, I'm not being funny. I mean, it's not. And I've been RVing for a long time, and you got to go buy a place that has an attraction that would encourage people to go there, or it's got to be a thoroughfare. Anything in between morphs into a full-time residence. And even though the people that may bring this to head, they don't like, they may have good intentions, but if it doesn't make money, they're going to sell it to somebody out of state, and we're going to have lost control of it.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace.
Yes, I'm done.
Mr. Greg McKibben.
I'm Greg McKibben. I live at 699 Campground Road. I'm about a mile off of the Flint River. And I'm going to take a little different angle, and I'd like to talk to you about the services that are going to be impacted by this possible potential RV park, campground, resort, however you want to term it. If you don't realize that there's still a website floating around that is taking reservations for this campsite as we speak. It was on there as of yesterday, so it's still floating out there. But what I'm going to talk about is public safety. First thing I'd like to talk about is the impact it's going to have on these services. I've got four that I want to talk about. The first one is EMS. As you all know, EMS is privately owned in the county. It's owned by the hospital. So they do the best they can. They are contracted to the county to provide a specific amount of ambulances for 911 emergencies, but they also have to run the hospital. That's where they make their money, is by taking the private calls out of the hospital, but that is what we have. They are so busy, people are waiting. I know there's several people in the audience out here that recently had emergency, or they have waited over 30 to 60 minutes for an ambulance that never showed up, loaded their patient, their family members into the car, and went to the hospital themselves. And one was a stroke that went straight in CT and then straight to CCU. They cannot guarantee you an ambulance if something was to happen at this campsite. If it's a medical emergency or an injury. So EMS, they can do the best they can. And I'll tell you how I know this. I'm a firefighter, paramedic. I'm retired, so I have been in the field. I know what I'm talking about. I've worked down here before. All right, the Sheriff's Office, they do the best they can. I know they're understaffed. I have talked with the deputies. I have talked with Chief Thomason. Because I have problems around my house now. They may have four deputies with a supervisor on shift every day. Most of their calls require two deputies because of safety reasons. They're going to come out and do the best they can, just like EMS. Their response times are long because they are usually coming from other parts of the county, answering all these calls, waiting to go to the next call. They have calls stacked up. So they'll come out and do the best they can, okay? These four guys right here, in your ordinance, you're going to dump it back on code enforcement to make sure that these people are doing what they're supposed to do, that they're staying as long as they are supposed to stay. These guys are supposed to come out, all three of them. There's only three code enforcement officers to make sure these people are doing what they're supposed to do, leaving when they're supposed to leave, not overstaying. What are they going to do? Are they going to tell them they have to leave right then, or do they cite them? If they cite them, now they get to stay even longer because they got to go to court. How long's that going to take? Couple of weeks? And then the judge is going to say, okay, I'll give you 30 days. Get out. Hypothetical. Oh, God, they get another 30-day stay. So they have to get out, and then they get stretched out longer and longer. So there's only three of them. How can you put this on back on them? They don't have time. They've got other things in the county to look at. They're trying to take care of now because I know their backlog. So it's just a big strain on all of them. Now, Fire Department, the catch-all. If they don't know what to do with it, Fire Department gets the call. There is a fire station very close. They will have a good response time, both of the guys on the truck, two. Okay, they're going to do the best they can. If this venture is as profitable as it's supposed to be, and there's that many campers in there, and you have a fire in one of these campers, you're not going to lose one. You're going to lose multiple because they're going to be that close together. All right, who's going to put the water supply in there? Is the county going to pay to have this water supply run in there and have the hydrants run? Or is the builder of this site? Something to think about. You're going to put it back on the taxpayers by y'all putting it in? Or are you going to make them put it in? They're going to have to have water in there. It's an aging water system on that side of the county already. I know some people have talked about having water leaks in their house, and the water department tells them, hey, we got to get some different pipe because this is so old. So think about that, too, when you think about Fire Department. This Fire Department has no swift water rescue. They do not do swift water rescue for that river. They do have two flat-bottomed boats that they barely train with annually. They're up here at the station near the reservoir, so that is all they've got. And you know these people are going to get on this river. They're going to start playing. They're going to get out there, and they're going to party. Somebody's going to get hurt. Somebody's going to slip over. Who's going to go get them? Fire Department. So think about those folks when you're thinking about your ordinance and everything that you have to consider.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.
Folks, I know you agree with what's being said, but could we please hold the applause so that we can get through the conversations, if you don't mind? I do appreciate the fact that you agree. Just help us as we move this forward because we have a lot of cases on the calendar this evening. Mr. Ken Smith.
Ken Smith, 935 Campground Road, Griffin, Georgia. Congratulations to our new Chairman and Vice Chair and all the new Board Appointees this year. I would like, just before I get started, to agree with Mr. Wallace on the comprehensive plan, that it should be our guide to any future development in Spalding County. I'm sure each Board member, as well as each citizen here, has a different opinion or belief about what should be done with a campground resort. But if we'll let the comprehensive plan be our guide, protect areas that we determine we would protect and develop those other areas, I think we'll be fine with our county. But I want to address the Board tonight concerning the site design and layout. If you have a copy of the ordinance in particular, it's Point C on Page 17. The ordinance itself allows for a maximum of two campsites per acre on one single parcel with a minimum of 50 acres. This would allow for 100 campsites on a minimum of 15, 50 acres. And I believe the spirit of the ordinance in regulating the maximum number of campsites is to prevent overdevelopment or to control the density, thereby preventing the overuse of public roads, emergency services, infrastructure, law enforcement services, and to lessen the environmental impact. I agree with the spirit of the ordinance, but in a practical sense, it should be defined more clearly. For instance, the developer who was seeking to build a campground in Spalding County initially requested a special exception on a piece of property on the Flint River, which was later withdrawn, but if allowed under the proposed ordinance, the developer could have built 110 campsites on a 55-acre tract. All of these numbers are approximately, but approximately 35 of the 55 acres are in a floodplain, which should leave about 20 acres to build roads, pavilions, check-in stations, bathhouses, and protective buffers. In my estimation, the proposed ordinance would allow 110 campsites in approximately 10 acres. Visually, this would look like the Walmart parking lot on a Friday night. And I'm requesting the ordinance that is changed to usable acreage, taking into consideration buffers, roads, floods, floodplains, et cetera. The ordinance itself does not address campsites and floodplains. I think we would all agree no camper should be allowed in a floodplain area. We all saw the danger and devastation that resulted from floodwaters in North Carolina, Tennessee, and it's just too risky. Over 230 people drowned, and many more are still unaccounted for. And again, it's just too risky, especially for outer-town travelers who would have no idea they're camping in a floodplain. And on the other end of the spectrum, if the developer purchased, let's say, 500 acres, then the proposed ordinance would allow 1,000 campsites, yes? 1,000, or potentially 5,000 people. That's double the population of Sonoy, Georgia, or 15 times the population of Orchard Hill and Sunnyside. Again, I think we would agree that nowhere in the county with this type of population explosion work. It would overload the infrastructure and create a crisis. It would fall on the taxpayers. I request the Board also to place a limit on the number of campsites that are allowed in a county and on a single parcel of land. We do this all the time in the county. I looked at the tax revenue that is brought in every year from the two new motels and the Walmart parking lot, and it's approximately $240,000, according to the Q Public site. The campground is going to put a drain on the community, and the Board should consider the risk of a campground creating in a free-market society where supply and demand drives existing and future development. A large campground could prevent future business investment in Spalding County. The $240,000 in taxes is the only building, is only the building. We also benefit from lodging taxes, and the local businesses benefit from visitors who are traveling as individuals rather than self-sufficient travelers. My hopes are if we accept the ordinance for RV park, its density and negative impact on the community will be controlled by preventing a high-density community or development.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. We appreciate your time.
Hey, if y'all are in agreement with what I said, would you raise your hand, let us see? Let the Commissioner see who's here against that.
David Villers.
Good evening. David Villers, 430 David Elder Road. Some of my thunder has been stolen, and I apologize for not being so well-versed. But just a couple of points I would like to share with you, and I believe the last gentleman mentioned it as well, that I noticed in the zoning request, there was not an upper end on, I see 50 acres minimum, but there was nothing on the zoning that I could see that put a cap on the size. So what's to stop somebody else who's zoned AR1 with 500 acres, 1,000 acres, from doing the same thing? So that's a big concern. From the zoning perspective, I think the merits of a site should, you know, have a thumbs up or thumbs down vote and not let this particular issue be a carte blanche for all zoning across the board because I think the ripple effect of some things that none of us can see today potentially could happen and cause a scenario that we might not be pleased with later down the road. I noticed there was a note that said 200 feet from a public road, but only 40 feet from a private residence. I think as guardians, as guardians, as guardians of some zoning, I think we need to be very careful and guard our private citizens and their property and not just view from a public road. I've noticed that I didn't see any other principal uses that allow for such a continuous, long-term use, fourteen days barring cemeteries. And I think the residents of the cemeteries would not be quite as concerning to most of us. Again, there was impacts on the county's most rural and pristine places, which are very sacred in this day and age. With things being gobbled up around us, I think we need to be wise stewards of the gifts that we've been given. Again, I would just say, there was also a note that says a fourteen day stay. And I would like to define that, is that a fourteen day stay at a RV park? Or is it a fourteen day stay at Site One? And then on day fifteen, you have to move your camper to Site Two? Or is it? We just need some more guardrails on that that would prevent the ripple effect of somebody staying, overstaying their welcome. I think nobody here is against growth, but I think we've got some growth that we need some boundaries on that will protect the citizens of the county now and going forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Tim Rogers?
Hello, I'm Tim Rogers. Thank you for this opportunity to voice my opinion tonight. My address is two seventeen Mockingbird Lane. My wife Chrissy and I have owned our home there since two thousand thirteen. I'm here in opposition to the special permission request to develop an RV park on West Ellis Road. I understand now that there is some wiggle room for what we are actually asking for special permission for. I guess I'll find out after we all speak. I'm here in opposition, my property is zoned AR1, just like the property on West Ellis Road. I'm familiar with the rules and regulations for AR1 zoning, and I'm aware that AR1 zoning allows for the establishment of religious campgrounds and private parks. But these are only allowed with special permission from the Planning and Zoning Board. I'm formally requesting that this special permission to establish an RV park on the AR1 zone property on West Ellis Road be denied. Here's my reason. AR1 zoning is a designation for agricultural property. Based on the information I have read on the Wildcat RV Resort website, they want to transform this agricultural land into a high-density RV park. This type of business establishment would typically require commercial zoning. This RV park will drain the resources of the county government and lower property values for surrounding properties. Since the initiation of this special request, I found myself thinking many times how glad I am that this isn't happening next door to me. I would be so, so upset if somebody decided to open an RV park on the land next to my house. I'm here today to support the neighbors on West Ellis Road. They shouldn't have to pay for the price in the form of decreased property value for the benefit of someone that wants to put a commercial RV park on agricultural land. I have a few more seconds left. I just, I'd like everybody to kind of put yourselves in the shoes of the people that live in the area where this is going to happen. They live in this area, in a nice rural area with peace and quiet. And now all of a sudden, there's the potential for a hundred-plus neighbors right next door, or right across the street, or right down the street. And I think it's a tragedy if we allow that to happen. So please do not grant special permission for this RV park on AR1 zone land. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
Greg Burns?
Hand it to me and I'll pass them down. Thank you, I appreciate your time and I greatly appreciate this unenviable job you have. We're here because, oh, sorry. Greg Burns, fifty-four, fifty-one, West McIntosh Road. You have an unenviable job. We're here because although the county is considering an ordinance for these RV parks, it is public record that this was initiated by an individual or individuals who want to build an RV park in a specific part of the county. So they come, normally they come before this board when they want to do something that either goes against existing ordinances or in this case, when an ordinance doesn't exist. And so you have the difficult task of balancing what an individual property owner wants against what perhaps the community wants or does not want. And so here then, we look to the comprehensive plan for guidance, which we all participated in developing. And sometimes new uses arise that were not anticipated, like the discussions we've had for solar panels and data centers. But that's not the case here. RV parks are nothing new, and I argue that there's a reason why they're not in the comp plan, because the community didn't want them in the first place. So you're going to hear or have heard arguments across the spectrum. Some may concede the point that on allowing RV parks, but only in commercial districts, for example. But if you allow them in, even in C1, I guarantee you that the individuals who want to build an RV park will be right back here asking for a variance or a rezoning. And so I urge you to send a strong message to the BOC and flat out say no to RV parks anywhere. And here's why. My wife and I have lived in Georgia for twenty-seven years, twenty-four in Sandy Springs. But we moved to Spalding County about four years ago, seeking a quieter, more rural lifestyle. We have a small farm in the priority ecological area along the Flint where we raise chickens and miniature cows, and it's truly a special place. But more than that, I've come to value the community that I find myself in, and especially my neighbors. Now imagine plopping down two hundred or so people in your backyard. They're constantly changing, never staying for more than a few days. And what do they give back to the community? Clearly, the park owners benefit financially, but you will have a bunch of people adding noise, pollution, roadway or EM use and so on to a county that's already stretched thin. And the revenues flowing from this would be minimal, just a hotel occupancy tax. Don't believe that the RVers will patronize local businesses. It's central to the business plan of RV parks to keep people on the site in the first place, to sell them food and other souvenirs. Looking at some of the promotional materials for franchises like Jellystone, they say that thirty-three percent of their revenues come from ancillary sources such as food, merchandise, and paid activity fees. There aren't any major attractions in this area, the RVers would mostly be going to and from Florida. Except for the people who want to stay and make the RV park their home. So I've given you a handout and for everyone else, this is from RV Travel with a headline that says, RVs Becoming Housing of Last Resort. We have an affordability crisis in housing in this country. The RV industry knows it, and they're doing everything they can to fight it. In this article, they put out arguments against this, but it's a fact. I mean, RV parks now, tiny homes later, it's not going to stop. Thank you.
Appreciate your time, thank you.
Patricia Recklet?
Good evening, I'm Patricia Recklet residing at seven-two-zero-two Noonan Road, Brooks. An AR1 property in conservation, home to agricultural animals and my family. I am directly opposed to the revised usage of the AR1 property, not only in this particular case, but in our entire county. While my opposition to this project in particular is vast, first and foremost is the revision of the zoning ordinance to include the Verbage Resort Campground as Special Exception Twenty-Six. In, pardon me, under the principal uses which will be altered and intended use for all counties and all properties in our county, AR1 properties. And this erodes the intended agricultural usage, its associated rural, small community lifestyle that many neighbors and I sought when purchasing land here. By definition, AR1 properties are zoned to establish and preserve low-to-medium density areas where agriculture is the primary land use and is free from incompatible uses such as this proposed zoning exception. The other twenty-five exceptions support community neighborhoods and family life. Proposed exception twenty-six does neither. It is not low to medium density, it is not agriculture, it is not a support business and services, and it directly conflicts with the county's comprehensive plan. Its intention is to attract and comfortably accommodate a high influx of transient people by promising a relaxed rural lifestyle and hosting many activities and events. Its operational standards are unenforceable and thus creating a loophole to convert temporary housing to permanent. The net negative socio-economic ecological impacts directly affect our agriculturally-dominated community. Its livestock and crop production decreases wildlife habitats, changes, stresses, and/or compromises the Flint River and its tributaries ecosystem, stresses the county's infrastructure and natural resources through increased usage and pollution from high traffic, high population density, subsequently increasing potential road hazards, accidents, and maintenance. Neither AR1 neighborhoods nor the county have the funding, roads, sanitation services, fire, police, deepwater rescue, or other emergency services and support businesses needed to accommodate the magnitude of this project, which would clearly be better supported in a commercially-zoned location. Many of my neighbors and I unite to plead to this board to do the right thing for our county's agricultural neighborhoods, environment, and way of life, to deny the zoning exception twenty-six. Please vote as if this was in your neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Please forgive me if I messed the name up, Mary Ellen Zaglowski? Zaglowski? Thank you for the correction.
My name is Mary Ellen Zaglowski, and I live at three-four-three Clayton Road. The rest of the address is Brooks, Georgia, but where I live is in the western part of Spalding County, the part between the Flint River and Line Creek. I have more or less retired from my career, which involved teaching English at several local colleges and universities. Others have spoken on the proposed resort, and I agree with those who have enumerated the dangers to all AR1 areas in the county if the variance is allowed. These people have indeed done their homework, and I thank them. My aim is to explain why I do not favor the resort due to the changes that will come to the way of life in western Spalding County in particular. While it is proposed for the other side of our new bridge, I still worry that it will affect our side. I purchased this house in nineteen eighty. At that time, there were only five houses on Clayton Road, and one of those technically faced Lakeview Drive. Now there are eight, but when the trees are fully in leaf, I can't see much of them. I have good neighbors, and we are there if needed. When I first moved here, what really made me happy was the quiet. I could hear the neighbors' cattle, and there were mornings and evenings on the porch when it seemed that I could hear the world breathing. It is still like that, except when it snows and young people show up seemingly from nowhere, driving four-wheelers and side-by-sides up and down a road on which they don't live. But it snows so seldom that I refrain from letting them know what I think of such activities. I used to ride my horses all around the area on the gravel roads, even crossing Highway sixteen to ride on the roads on the other side. That stopped when the passing lanes were added, and the traffic on sixteen has increased slowly but inevitably over the passing years, until it is the constant background noise like a distant river. The quality of life here is good, and the seasons all bring their beauty. I am glad that while there has been development, there are still large tracts of property around me, and we don't get in each other's way here. Most people are here to stay, and life is good. Most people who are here in western Spalding County did not decide to live here with neighbors in close proximity, as in the planned RV resort. What if, instead of camping, some decide to take up permanent residence, adding to the strain on the infrastructure? Years ago, there was a proposal to put an outer perimeter highway to take some of the freight off I-285. People were surprised when they went to the meetings about the road and discovered that, in some cases, houses were going to be mown down or located right next to the equivalent of said I-285. Things got a little ugly when one of the official representatives of the progressive building side said in effect, you people keep talking about your quality of life, you don't have any quality of life. The whole room seemed to get a lot smaller, and people seemed to be unconsciously getting ready to charge the speakers in the front of the room. But there was no attack, just a charged atmosphere. I am sure expense was the reason that the road was never built, but I like to think that quality of life still matters. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you for your comments.
Angela Stalins?
My name is Angela Stalins, I live at one-seven-zero Crabtree Road, just around the corner.
I'm sorry, would you get a little closer to the mic so we can hear you? Thank you.
My name is Angela Stalins, I live at one-seventy Crabtree Road in Griffin. And I do not agree or support a resort campground in the area where it's being proposed. While I love camping and have enjoyed many campgrounds, they come with many problems and challenges. Campgrounds are loud, no matter how you manage them. People with differing ideas of the use of the facility and their expectation of camping in the great outdoors can create many problems for the park staff as well as the surrounding community. Loud music, racing engines, people using walking trails after dark, and people coming and going at all hours, even when hours are specifically posted, I've seen all of that. I've owned a large motorhome and driven across the United States, staying in large and small parks. Small parks usually mean small roads, and roads used by motorhomes and vehicles pulling large trailers are always in poor shape. Vehicles of that size have problems with narrow bridges, mailboxes, narrow road shoulders, and turning. In addition, many RVers will ignore signs for bridge and roadway weight limits and heights, further taxing the infrastructure. Put in such a place where the only access is a narrow road would be a disaster. These facilities are easier to access from highways or truck routes like Highway sixteen. A resort campground is a commercial business. Although campgrounds are generally wide open by their nature and provide access to outdoor activities, they are not compatible with rural roads and low-density population areas. When considering changes to zoning or exceptions, commissioners usually consider things like whether the amendment is necessary to promote the public health, safety, or welfare. In this case, those criteria would not be met since there's no compelling need for a resort. Also considered will be the suitability of the property for the proposed purpose, which again would not meet that criteria as the development would negatively impact a wetland and conservation area along the Flint River. The commission would maybe consider whether the development would overtax any streets presently existing to serve the site and other public facilities and utilities, which it undoubtedly would. The comprehensive plan offers specific guidance to protect our rural areas, controlled development, so that these areas will not suffer from negative impact. Areas designated as rural community comprise forty-one percent of Spalding County. Development in these areas should favor undeveloped or cultivated land with large distances between buildings and deep setbacks from roadways. Agriculture and farming, like those that have been described, here should be the primary businesses. A high-density development such as a commercial campground would be a strain on resources and infrastructure. It is contradictory to the comprehensive plan and would diminish the rural character the plan intended to create and ensure. For this reason, I am against a campground inside of AR1. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bill Potter? All right, thank you very much. Stephanie Hudgens?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Stephanie Hudgens, I'm at fifty-two thirty-three West Ellis.
I'm sorry to interrupt, would you please get closer to the microphone so we can hear you more clearly?
Sure, does this matter?
Yes, thank you.
Can I hand these out? Or can you hand them out? Are we allowed to? Thank you so much. Sorry. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Stephanie Hudgens, I'm at fifty-two thirty-three West Ellis. I'm here as a concerned landowner of Spalding County to urge you to take more time to carefully review and revise the proposed regulations for RV parks and residential zones. The decisions you make on this issue will shape the future of our community for many years to come. We ask that you approach these regulations with the utmost care, ensuring that they reflect the needs and values of our county while protecting the quality of life for all residents. In doing so, I encourage you to look at how surrounding counties have addressed this very issue. Many of them have adopted stricter ordinances that balance economic development with preserving the character and safety of residential areas. For example, in neighboring counties, RV parks are either limited to commercial highway zones or, when permitted, in residential or agricultural areas are subject to clear and stringent requirements. They include minimum lot widths to ensure adequate space between developments and ingress and egress directly onto major thoroughfares, not small residential roads. These rules are designed to protect local traffic patterns, public safety, and property values, all of which are at risk under the current proposal. Other requirements include specific regulations regarding waste, both solid and liquid, which RV parks tend to create a lot of, and requirements around sites per usable acreage. I have shared with you where you can find excerpts from surrounding counties regarding their RV park ordinances. Unfortunately, the proposed regulations in our county fall short of these best practices. Without such safeguards, RV parks and residential zones could lead to increased traffic congestion, noise, and infrastructure strain. They could also change the character of neighborhoods that many of us chose because of their peaceful residential nature. Once these developments are built, the impacts are irreversible. We urge you to prioritize thoughtful planning over expediency. By taking more time to align our regulations with the higher standards set by surrounding counties, you can ensure that our community remains a desirable place to live while still accommodating thoughtful and well-placed development. This is not about halting progress. It's about ensuring progress is managed responsibly and in a way that benefits everyone. Please slow down this process, carefully review the proposed regulations, and make the necessary adjustments to align them with stricter proven standards. Your leadership on this issue is critical, and we're counting on you to make the right choice for our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Chris Hudgens?
Chris Hudgens, fifty-two thirty-three West Ellis Road. Want to start off with the why. I'm here resident. My wife had just spoken myself. Within the last couple of years, I purchased fifty acres in Spalding County to build our forever home, raise our family. We're already paused on that because our kids are not out of school yet, don't want our kids going to the county school. So we're kind of already delaying our dream. With that, my wife and I formed a coalition opposed to the RV resort when it first hit because I'm going to call it ground zero was right next to our dream home, where the sign first popped up. Coalition's knowrvresort.com. In respect to the board's time, I've consolidated our current petitions and emails to these two packets, which I'll give to David, totaling three hundred and fifty-four concerned citizens, which are also opposed. And these two packets today is saving the board seventeen hours of listening, okay? I want to discuss why introducing an RV park into Spalding County's rural areas could detrimentally have detrimental effects in our community and why it should only be permitted in commercial zoned areas. Spalding County is known for its rural charm, a place where people enjoy the peace and quiet and the tight-knit nature of the community. This kind of environment thrives on local agriculture, small businesses, and families who value the slower pace of life. Introducing an RV park into these areas would significantly disrupt that balance in several important ways. First, the issue of infrastructure. Many rural areas in Spalding County simply do not have the necessary utilities to support a large influx of visitors. RV parks require substantial resources, such as water, sewage, electricity, and waste management. Our current infrastructure is designed for a more stable, small population, and it's going to struggle to keep up. This can lead to higher utility costs for residents and potential environmental hazards from improper waste disposal. We could face long-term consequences that would put undue pressure on taxpayers and existing services. Next, I want you to consider the traffic impacts. Rural roads in Spalding County are narrow and often not designed for the heavy flow of traffic an RV park would attract. During peak season, an RV park could bring hundreds of vehicles, adding congestion, increasing the risk of accidents, causing damage to our local roads. This doesn't just affect the visitors but the daily lives of our residents who rely on these roads for their work and their daily routines. Additionally, Spalding County is home to significant wildlife and natural beauty, which form a core part of its identity. Introducing an RV park into rural areas can lead to habitat disruption, increased population, two things that would harm the environment and decrease the quality of life for those who live there. The long-term environmental cost of such development could not only affect total wildlife but also the future sustainability of our county. Furthermore, we must consider Spalding County's comprehensive plan. This plan is a vision that we've already laid out and paid for, the future growth and development of our county. It reflects the needs and value of our community, balancing growth while preserving what makes us unique. An RV park in rural areas contradict this plan as it undermines the careful zoning decisions we've made to protect our rural character and direct development towards areas that can handle it without significant harm to residents, infrastructure, and the environment. Finally, the presence of an RV park in a rural area would erode the sense of community we cherish. People come and go, and that shift can change the fabric of a small town, where neighborly ties and long-term investments in the area are key. A community is built over years, not through short-term stays. For all these reasons, we believe RV parks should only be allowed in commercial zoned properties on major highways, where the infrastructure, roadway, and services are better equipped to manage them. Our comprehensive plan's already done the heavy lifting. It's already laid this out. All we have to do now is follow it.
Thank you, Mr. Hudgens.
Pam Wallace?
Hello, my name is Pam Wallace, and I live at fifty-three nineteen West Macintosh Road. Thank you for giving all of us the opportunity to speak. I come in to speak on a personal matter that I have endured myself. We own land on the west side of the county, right at the Spalding Fayette County line. I personally have an issue with our roads around this part of the county. We are at the end of the county, and our roads are in terrible condition. We have potholes. We have deep shoulder drop-offs. The white line is even cut off on a lot of the roads where it's just eroding away. And the reason why I have such a personal issue with it is I clipped one of the edges. My tire went off, flattened right away. I tried to clear out of it. I ruined two rims and a tire. My husband was not happy about it, having to pay for it. But then my car, when you put one new tire with the rest of them, I had to get four tires. So it was a very expensive, personal issue for me. I encourage you to come down to the end of the line of the roads and see our roads because you need to stay right in the middle. These RVs will take up a lot more room. So if you're trying to get around them, because I don't hug the yellow line, I hug the white line because I'd rather run off the road than get hit head-on. So you're going to have to be careful with these RVs coming down around these roads and trying to get around them. The cost to maintain the roads after the RV's traveling on them will be astronomical to repair. We can't repair them now with what we have, so what are we going to do when we do allow them in there? Who will be paying for them? I believe it'll probably be our tax dollars, so it'll raise our taxes. But RV weights are by the type of RV they are. Class A, which we own a class A, can weigh anywhere from thirteen thousand to fifty-five thousand pounds. We have a class A that weighs fifty thousand pounds. It's forty-five feet long. Class B can run six thousand to eight thousand pounds. Class C can run ten thousand to fifteen thousand pounds. Now, the next ones, travel trailers, can run twenty-five hundred to eight thousand. Fifth wheels can run ten thousand to twenty thousand pounds. Pop-up campers, one thousand to three thousand pounds, and toy haulers, anywhere from five thousand to twenty thousand pounds. All of those would require an extra vehicle to pull those, so that's an extra average four to eight thousand pounds of weight pulling the ones that are not automatically driven. So this is the weight without any additional. We have a tank, a water tank, and we all know what water weighs. So you start adding the water and the necessities for the RV trips, and you're talking about even more additional weight. So my big thing is the feeder or the connector roads are not able to handle this type of weight. The connector roads have sharp turns around our area because I'm always scared in the morning somebody's over that line, and I'm cutting away because I don't want to be hit head-on. So an RV trying to take some of these sharp turns down around our way, Ellis, Macintosh, those type roads, we have a lot of sharper turns right at the end down there. RVs are wide, heavy, and sometimes long. They will cause more wear and tear, making the roads uneven and more bumpy. RVs take up more space on the road, which can make it harder for other cars to pass by or for people to walk and bike safely. On our ends of the roads, we have a lot of bikers, so you've got to worry about them also. RVs on smaller rural roads can make it more difficult for everyone to use the roads safely and comfortably. I do not have an issue with an RV park, but they should be placed on major roads that can accommodate them adequately. We have the class RV that I mentioned before, and we know how much it weighs and how the roads need to accommodate our type of RV. We love to go RVing and see areas, but our rural roads are not built to take on RVs continually. Take, for example, Highway sixteen off seventy-five has great roads. I don't know why we're not looking at major roads to put this thing on commercially. We RV to see attractions, and we don't see that we have as many attractions to bring people into this area. The state roads and highways provide safe access to the RV parks and prevent increased traffic on smaller rural roads. The RV parks should be placed on state roads, such as sixteen, Highway sixteen, Highway ninety-two, Highway one fifty-five, Highway three sixty-two, or nineteen and forty-one, and also in commercial existing areas. If the county is going to permit RV parks and campgrounds in AR-one or AR-two, then those should be limited to properties that front on a state highway or are contiguous to an already commercially zoned property. The state highways provide safe access to the RV parks and prevent increased traffic on the smaller rural roads. If the RV parks and campgrounds are placed along the scenic byways, such as like ninety-two and sixteen, they must be developed so that they do not destroy our scenic byways, which the comprehensive plan states should be preserved, should be used to preserve the rural and pastoral nature of these roads that traverse the rural community area. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you for your time.
Kenny Ayers?
Mr. Ayers, I'm going to ask you to please make your comments as brief as possible if you could not repeat some of the things some other people have said. We're going to have to keep to our three-minute limit so that we can move on with the rest of the agenda. Thank you.
My name's Kenny Ayers. I live at forty-five seventy-seven West Ellis Road. I own the property right beside the creek, next to the RV park where they're trying to put it at. My family's been out there at that property for over seventy years. And I don't know if y'all have ever been down the Flint River back there, but we used to go down as kids. You can't float down the Flint River back there. And all that property back there is wet, too. So I'm not going to repeat everything everybody else said, but I do not want the RV park there. I'm clearing that property up some more now to put cattle on. And to me, it's just in the wrong place. I did commercial development for a while, and the last project I worked on was the next to a KOA campground. Seventy-five percent of it, they lived there permanently. And now they just added more spaces so they could have more permanent residents there because that's where they make their money. So I'm not going to get into all the ordinance and all that other stuff, but if it does happen, I still think fifteen days is too many days to stay. But there's nothing in Spalding County that I'd want to come camp for unless I just pass them through. So, and I've been here my whole life, so. But if y'all want to see what it looks like, you can go out there. You can come on my property, and you can see the backside of that property because mine goes all the way to the Flint. And Jerry Fields and they're sitting right there. Their family's been out there as long as my family has. So I can tell you anything you want to know about that property all the way from West Macintosh to Highway sixteen on the river. It's not that wide. You're not going to float boats down. You're going to carry it most of the time during the summertime. So thank you.
Thank you.
Taylor Prince? Taylor Prince? Craig French?
Good evening, board. My name is Craig French. I live at one seventy Crabtree Road. I'm the president of an HOA that is in West Ellis and Crabtree, less than about three-quarters of a mile from the proposed. And if I think we can divine a campground, we can talk about it. I moved from midtown ten years ago to Spalding County for a reason. I want to live in the country. I don't want to live in the city. As an RVer of thirty-plus years and somebody who's been all over the country and visited two-hundred-and-fifty or more proposed campgrounds and RV resorts, I can tell you the good, the bad, and the ugly. If you think that fifteen days is going to work, it's not. Husband and wife swap every time. They do it at national parks. They do it at state parks. They do it at KOAs. They wind up staying months. There is not enough here to police that. Okay? If anybody wants to approve a campground in Spalding County, do so on a commercial property. I'm also the owner and was the owner of a very large thirty-three thousand pound RV. Been all over the place. Do you think I like skinny roads? Do you think I like coming down Crabtree? No, I sold it for a reason. Okay, I drove it for seven years all over this country to Alaska and back. I might know what I'm talking about. Does the current Spalding County EMS, fire, law enforcement support a high density? That's what a campground is. It's a high-density living environment. I believe the answer is no. Why? Because my mother had a stroke two days after Christmas and waited forty minutes for an ambulance in Sun City Peachtree. We don't have it here, people. We don't need more. Stop the sprawl. Spalding County's Comprehensive Plan, as many other people have touched on, it lays out everything for the area where the Wildcat RV Park wants to be. Yes, they have a website. Yes, they have a fancy website. It's a rural community. It's right on your own map. It's a conservation area. It's right on your own map. Page thirty-two on the map, priority ecological area. Two-thirds of the property in question is in that area. What is that? It's quote, "in your own conservation area." "The highest value ecological land within the county." "Preservation," quote, "is of the utmost importance." That's in our county's plan. What do we do with an area like that? We place a business that generates a considerable amount of trash, sewage? Is that good for our priority ecological area? I don't think so. What about the increased traffic? The road degradation is talked about before. The noise, the trash trucks, the mobile RV repair, the sewer, the large heavy motorhomes. Are we considering any of that on our small roads in that area? I've driven them. I've, I've, I have neighbors that sold their large RVs because of some of the smaller bridges that are on West Ellis that were on Moon with the new bridge closed that was on Macintosh. Crabtree Road where I live at looked like a highway. If one of those bridges closed, guess what West Ellis is going to look like? A highway. The vision for our community and the rural community character will best boast a simple, quiet way of life as it just states in our own Comprehensive Plan. I hope with low-density, single-family residential users, we can keep it that way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Shannon Bragg?
I'm Shannon Bragg, one-one-five Landing Way, which is a neighborhood, small neighborhood off of West Ellis. I'm here to oppose the proposed ordinance that would allow the RV resort and park in our rural Spalding County, especially in AR one zoning. This area is meant to preserve the character of our community, and allowing the RV park would undermine the vision that was laid out in the Comprehensive Plan that we spoke of. The Comprehensive Plan clearly states that the future development map, page twenty-two, serves as a guide for our future development and informs rezoning decisions. This means that we have the responsibility to ensure any development aligns with the long-term goals of our community and our county. In these areas, future development should remain compatible with our rural character as stated on page thirty-eight of that plan. The introduction of the RV resort, which is often a large commercial venture, that would disrupt the agricultural and forestry landscape that is the defining characteristic of our rural spaces. The Comprehensive Plan designates both sides of the Flint River as PEA, which is an area of special attention due to its ecological value, page thirty-one through thirty-three. This is our, this is our county's most ecological-sensitive land, and its preservation should be of the utmost importance. The plan also designates lands along the Flint River and other creeks in areas intended to be protected for natural conservation as noted on page thirty-six of that plan. Allowing RV campgrounds and resorts in the area could lead to overdevelopment, putting additional strain on water resources, wildlife, habitats, and the natural beauty that defines the area. Furthermore, if the RV park and resort are allowed in these areas, they should be only considered on properties that front a state highway and are adjacent to existing commercial zones as stated by other people. This would ensure a safe access to the resort while limiting the impact of our rural roadways. To wrap up, I urge you to consider the broader implications of allowing the RV resort in our rural Spalding County. We cannot afford to prioritize transient, high-density developments over long-term agricultural and environmental sustainability. I thank you for your time, and I want to ask anybody who wants anything like this forty feet from your property line, raise your hand.
Marie Rolls?
My name is Marie Rolls. I live at one-five-five Sandy Lane. According to Spalding County's twenty-fourty-two Comprehensive Plan, the county is in pursuit of Plan First designation with the state of Georgia. If the county achieves this designation, we could receive much-needed incentives such as community development block grants and reduced interest rates on loans from the Georgia Department of Community Affairs for DCA programs related to employment and downtown revitalization, among other bonuses and perks. In order to achieve this designation, the community must demonstrate a track record of successfully carrying out their Comprehensive Plans. As written, a key theme of Spalding County's Comprehensive Plan is to focus on rural character preservation, particularly on the county's western and southeastern areas. Rural characteristics include low-density housing, forests, farms, and lots of nature. They do not include a campground, much less a resort. These rural areas are primarily zoned AR one. That is exactly where a private citizen wants to build her bustling campground resort business, which according to the revised proposed ordinance would maintain up to sixty percent of the property in a natural, undisturbed state. That would mean that at least forty percent of the property, if not more, has to be disturbed from its natural state. Forty percent or more of the trees, vegetation, and wildlife have to be destroyed. This is not preserving rural character. As promised on WildcatRVResort.com, her website that's already up and running for this campground, she plans to invade our rural lifestyle with a vibrant new destination in Griffin, Georgia. The very definition of vibrant is full of energy. She advises, advertises a rec room, a large poolside screen to watch the game, karaoke by the pool, and so much more, all of which go against preserving the rural character of the AR one area. Now let's talk safety. According to NationalPolice.org, the national average response time to emergency calls is ten minutes. According to SpaldingSheriff.org, Spalding County's average response time is already over eleven minutes. In December, my husband and I needed EMS. After waiting at least forty-five minutes for EMS to arrive, we decided that we would get faster service on our own. I've talked to several other members of our community who've experienced very similar situations, one whose mother was having a stroke and had to wait forty minutes for EMS, as you heard him speak already. As you can see, getting first responder assistance in Spalding County already requires a lengthy wait, and rural areas such as AR one experience even longer wait times. As is advertised on WildcatRVResort.com and seen on the Wildcat Creek RV Resort map, this private citizen has planned for a pool, lazy river, hot tubs, and kayaking canoe access on both the Flint River and Wildcat Creek. We cannot add the burden of a large campground resort with any one of these amenities to our already overwhelmed first responders. The risk and liability far exceed any benefit for anyone other than the owner of the campground. Amending ordinances to allow a private citizen to expand her multiple businesses into our rural backyards goes against Spalding County's twenty-fourty-two Comprehensive Plan and would put a stop to the county receiving Plan First designation. We're counting on you to stop one person's thoughtless endeavor from costing the county its Plan First designation, incentives, bonuses, and perks, and costing AR one constituents any further time and money, or worse yet, our safety and access to first responders. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Paul Rolls?
Good evening. My name is Paul Rolls. I live at one-five-five Sandy Lane, Brooks, Georgia. I'm here tonight also in opposition to the RV resort plans and any plans for any of them like it in our whole county. I and my whole family enjoys camping, hunting, fishing. Been a Georgia resident my whole life. I enjoy where we live now, but I don't want this changing things. Me and both my sons are Eagle Scouts. We've done plenty of camping. Camped all over, camped with no tents, nothing, other than blankets. This is not camping. An RV resort is going to be, as someone else said, a Walmart parking lot, a Home Depot parking lot. If that's what they want, they can go down there and camp. But as I said, I'm opposed to it in our whole county because I care about the whole county, not just our backyards. So I do not agree with the ordinance in, in accepting in a campground. West Ellis was the original proposed location, but if you, if you read the definitions and you've ever driven down, driven down West Ellis, you know it is a small, dark road, many curves, including one-ninety-degree curve. And if you've ever driven an RV and hauled a travel trailer, you know that this road is not good for it. Public Works Department is already can't handle and keep up with the roads, as everyone else has said. The, the amended ordinances written are, are far too lax as well. There, there's no lighting restrictions, and, and there are in the agritourism section six oh four A, C, B, G, to protect the unfortunate tax-paying constituents who neighbor a campground resort. There are no restrictions on the number of vehicles and the number of people per campsite. There are no restrictions on the gate code and how often it has to be changed to prevent people from sharing code or returning at another time. There are no restrictions on pets. There are no requirements for emergency shelters to protect campers from the regular tornadoes that this county experiences. And there are no insurance requirements, as there are in Article Four, Section four-two-four, A, three, and D. As you can see, the ordinances, even as amended, allow far too much risk and liability on the county's part. Too many safety risks in general to be approved. So I ask you, please, don't let non-residents pollute and deplete our county resources. Don't bring an eyesore and a problem to our county. Be responsible, do what's right. Instead of siding with one wealthy family, think about the taxpayers of today and tomorrow who do not want this, our children and grandchildren. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Kathleen Burns?
Hi, I'm Kathleen Burns. I live at fifty-four fifty-one West Macintosh Road. I'm here to voice my opposition to a commercial RV resort campground becoming an AR one permitted use requiring special exception. The proposed ordinance is not in accordance with the Spalding County Comprehensive Plan, which states the rural community's character area will boast a simple and quiet way of life with rural development that complements existing agricultural communities. The Spalding Comprehensive Plan also states primary future land uses include agriculture and forestry, agritourism as defined by the County Court of Ordinances as related to farming, detached, single-family residential, civic benefit uses such as places of worship and public parks, and greenways and trailways. The, the proposed commercial RV resort campground ordinance defines a high-density living situation which has nothing to do with agriculture or agritourism. RV, RV resorts and campgrounds belong in commercially zoned areas along highway corridors. AR one land does not have the necessary infrastructure to support a hundred-plus RV and campsites. This infrastructure includes roadways, public sewer systems, emergency medical services, fire safety, police and code enforcement, which will be required to handle the presence of this type of high-density living situation. The sewage requirements alone should prohibit it. Imagine a hundred-plus campsites with, let's say, two campers at each site. Each person using the restroom three to four times a day, plus RVs emptying their holding tanks into the campsite dump station. Connection to a public sanitary sewer facility would be a must, but it is not a requirement in the ordinance proposed. Let's see. It should be because AR one zoned areas in Spalding County contain priority ecological areas along the Flint River and Wildcat Creek and wetlands near Heads Creek Reservoir, part of the watershed protection district for Spalding County. My husband and I moved to Griffin from Atlanta four years ago primarily for the quiet rural life. We love it here. Our rural community is beautiful and peaceful. We love our neighbors. The character of our community will be destroyed if commercial RV park resorts are allowed to be a permitted use of AR one zoned land. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Anna Bragg?
Good evening. My name is Anna Bragg. I live at one-one-five Landing Way. I am here to express my strong opposition to the proposed ordinances that would allow RV resorts and AR one zoning districts. One of my concerns is the strain this proposal would place on county services, especially fire and EMS. The addition of a large RV resort with a hundred RVs or more would demand substantial resources that our local fire and EMS departments are currently not equipped to handle. These services are already stretched thin, and a sudden increase in visitors and residents in this area could overwhelm the system, jeopardizing the safety and well-being of both residents and RV campers. Additionally, the infrastructure in much of AR one zones Spalding County is not designed to accommodate the significant, insignificant increase in RV traffic. Our rural roads can be narrow, winding, and are often in poor condition, making them ill-suited for the heavy and large vehicles associated with RVs, and this includes collector roads. This could create safety hazards for both residents and campers, as well as increase wear and tear on infrastructure that is already underfunded. The fact that most of one of, the fact that most of the AR one zoned area is not connected to a public sewage system raises another major concern. The lack of reliable waste disposal infrastructure could lead to improper sewage management, resulting in sewage dumping that could find its way into nearby waterways, threatening local ecosystems and public health. This risk is compounded by the question of how sewage from a hundred-plus RVs will be handled. A commercial enterprise of this sort needs to be connected to a public sewage system. Most importantly, there is also the issue of code enforcement. Given the transient nature of RV campgrounds, there will likely be challenges in ensuring that maximum stay limits are adhered to. This opens the door for potential long-term stays, effectively turning the campground into a permanent residential area. As a result, the area could experience increased crime, reduced property values, and a general decline in the quality of life. During the November Board meeting, I recall that members of the board stated that the northeastern part of the county was designated for high-density housing to maintain the rural character of other areas. Allowing an RV resort with a hundred or more RVs in an AR one district directly contradicts that plan. These campgrounds, regardless of whether their residents are permanent or transient, will have the same effects on our community as high-density housing, crowding, noise, and increased traffic. Finally, there's a serious concern that the RV resort will eventually transition into a long-term living facility, exacerbating all the problems outlined above. An RV park that begins as temporary will inevitably lead to permanent living arrangements undermining the intent of preserving the rural character of the area. In conclusion, I urge you to reject the proposed ordinances and consider the long-term consequences of allowing RV resorts in AR one zones. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your comments.
Madam Chair, that's all that have signed up for, for the speaking this evening, for those three.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners then have a comment or have something you would like to say?
Well, I mean, if we're going to discuss it now, I mean, I can, I don't know that I could split it up into each three, but I mean, I could talk generally.
So let me reiterate one thing, if I may, again. At the end of AR one zoning and the end of many other zoning districts, there is this statement, "All uses not permitted within this district by this section are specifically prohibited." So before you is the first item, which is the definition. So you basically have three, three options on this definition. You can either approve it as written in your staff report. You can alter it to something else, or you can reject it outright by not including it in the code. The first two options basically say, "We are open to the possibility of this in the future in the code. We want to have certain safeguards in place to restrict it." Your third option, if you choose that, basically closes the door on the use. So I just want to bring that to your attention. So I just want to bring that to your attention.
Well, alright, since y'all are looking at me, um, when I spoke, um, can y'all hear me? I'm trying to learn the new system. Okay. Um, well, I'm an RVer myself, have been for a long time, and, um, I think part of our job is to give maybe five different sets of eyes to what comes up. And my background, I, when I saw this and heard about it in, uh, November, I was going, "That's pretty interesting." I've reached out to a professional engineer that does RV park designs in surrounding states. Uh, I think I sent y'all a copy of his correspondence back, which was totally unexpected. He said, uh, basically, um, there's no such thing as resort campsite is the real definition. And those of you that are in, um, the motorhomes, those are a different class of vehicle than a pop-up or a tent camper. Got a lot of experience in both. I can appreciate sleeping on the ground. And when my back failed, I had to go to a mattress every night. And I've been into parks. I was a campground host at one of our state parks for several months, so I got, uh, clean toilets, pick up, and talked to a lot of people. And I, I agree with a lot of the comments tonight about, uh, road systems, uh, is it adequate? And I've tried to separate things in maybe the ordinance itself and then where does it go? And I, I think I'm firmly convinced tonight it does not belong in AR1. I live in an AR1 and I was trying to envision, you know, how would I like that? So I'm, I'm leaning more towards a commercial district, if at all, because I could also, you know, say, "Maybe we don't need it at this time. Maybe we just, we just kill it."
We'll need to have orders so that we can continue this discussion for this case. I appreciate your encouragement, but we'll just keep it quiet, please.
Well, I, I'll, that's a bad word. Um, not vote to have one, because I, I, I don't know that we're really ready for it. You know, okay, if it's not agricultural, where? It's a commercial business. They're there to make money. They're not to entertain guests except for a fee. So then where in commercial? Um, that's kind of where I am right now, and if, and if I had to vote on all three tonight, I would vote no.
Well, let me play devil's advocate over there. Let, let's say you have a, you rezone it, "Commercial for Resort Campground."
Right, right.
Um, in reading the definition, it says, first of all, resort is not really in a commercial area, but-
Sure, sure.
-high-quality amenities, services to enhance the camping experience. Now, I'm not much of a camper, but I don't, I would rather, I think, spend the night in my backyard than go to a KOA or one of those highly dense campgrounds.
Right, right.
And if that's what it's going to be on a commercial piece of property, isn't that defeating the purpose having a resort campground in the first place?
Look, I, I don't disagree, and I'm not being argumentative either.
So that, by that choice, if it's not preferable in AR1, it defeats the purpose of even having it preferable in a commercial as well.
I agree, I agree. And, and you know, I mean, there's a lot of campers out there. I've seen the motorhomes come in, they park, they hook up, and you gotta have, you gotta have fifty, fifty amp power, you gotta have water, and the primo spots have sewer right there. So you don't have to use your holding tank. And I mean, if, if, if I have to choose, I mean, that's where I'd rather go, and there's very few places. Those people tend to stay in their motorhome. I don't like doing that. I mean, I, I, I like being outside. I'm one of the campers. And I know when I was working at the state park, um, the park manager, chief ranger, I'll call him, he says, "Bill, you're not in enforcement. You don't make people follow the rules. All you do is just, you know, campground host." And, um, I was glad for that because I did see people that I was going, "Well, that really is kind of bending the rules," but I'm a temp guy and so I, I worry about how it's going to be enforced. You know, state park, they have rangers that can arrest you right there. And, you know, calling somebody... So I mean, I'm, I'm really torn. I like camping. I would love to camp close to home, but I don't want to have to drive down a crooked road. My wife and I have the most arguments over, "I'm not going down that road. I am not doing it." And you can't back up with, with forty feet behind you. I've got a travel trailer. So if, I mean, I guess my, my thought from coming in to now of let's table it and further define this, and I'm saying table for ninety-day period till we get it worked out, and I'm the one, so I don't mind volunteering to be the head of a special look-at committee, whatever you want to call it. Um, or, um, I mean, if, if we got to press for a vote, then I'm going to say no.
Thank you for your comment.
Sorry for the, I'm, I'm just trying to give you a little context. It's, it's not easy because I've listened to everybody and I, I'm torn. I like what David's put together and no disrespect to any of us, but I, I just, this is only probably one of the things I know heck of a lot about, and I've done research.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the commissioners?
I would like to ask a question. If, if this resort area cannot, what other zoning could be, it be authorized in other than AR1?
Whatever y'all made it.
In other words, any, any zoning it could get-
If you saw fit to put it in there, yes. But it would have to be, anything that's not, the way the Spalding zoning code works, again, anything, any use that's not specifically mentioned or put in a use section, whether it's a special exception outright permitted or whatever, doesn't exist and is not allowed.
And, and, excuse me, Madam Chair, but I know a couple of counties that I looked at their ordinance, they have a special, um, RV campground section. I was thinking back, Newton, of the Cherokee Rose, ten years ago, having to come up with a special category that planned, whatever it is. My memory is hazy. I know that's a way to do it if, if we really feel like we need to have one. Um, once again, I'm kind of torn. Do, do we need it in 2025?
Thank you.
Sorry.
Any more comments?
Um, I will say again, thank you for all your comments. You brought up some very good points this evening. Um, I'll say also that, um, at the last meeting, we had talked with David and asked him to go back and, um, look at some additional details, and he has made what I believe is some good changes, um, and, and made some good options. But unfortunately, there are still some, some unknown issues and some limitations that I don't feel like are, are there. Um, a lot of them were brought out tonight with the actual number, the size, and, um, just some maximum numbers and some other guidelines that probably should be placed there. Um, so I feel like it's a little premature still to do something, and, uh, my general feel would be that, you know, why go piecemeal this together and, and go to one thing and another? I think we need to get the whole plan together. Um, so I could go along with what Mr. Bryant's saying there, um, if we're willing to work with him and the group to kind of put together some more details and try to put together something more, um, or better developed and, and better prepared to take forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I agree, um, that personally, I don't think we're ready to move forward with this, and I would entertain a motion now from the members of the committee as to your action to take on this item.
I'm, I can move to table.
Let's be clear, that is, uh, on the proposed text amendment?
All three.
Well, I know, but you're going to have to vote on all threes. You're going to have to vote on them separately, so-
Right, right, right.
Um, I guess by definition, the, uh, tabling of a text amendment renders two and three probably moot, so that will probably be sufficient. If, if you were to approve the text amendment, you would have to then, then, or recommend approval on the text amendment, you'd have to vote on the other two.
Well, I, I move then that, um, we, uh, table, um, provision one, and I'm sorry, I'm not looking at the agenda, but the, um, campground resort definition.
Article Two, Section 202, adding definition of campground resort, correct?
That's correct. You're correct.
Do I have a second to the?
I will say-
We have a second? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? It's passed by majority.
As I said, two and three, uh, are rendered moot by the fact that you made, you made the motion to table the first one.
And, and just, just to follow up, and sorry for if I'm speaking out of turn, I'm, I'm one of the new guys here. Um, as I mentioned, I'm not looking for extra work, but I mean, I, I kind of created this and I am willing to work extra. I believe in, uh, some kind of time limit, so I mean, uh, if, if y'all want to put a time limit, don't do it in ten days, please. But, um, I would like to have that open where maybe we could hear back from some, some more folks, because I, I learned a lot tonight, too. So I'm, I'm not saying that I relish doing this, but I am willing to do it to come up, and I'm still going to have the, uh, argument of, or, or the thought, "Where should it go?" That's still in my mind. Sorry.
So should, is there, uh, that you would like to make an amendment to the proposed-
Well, I, I don't know if that's appropriate. I don't know the proper protocol. I'm just mentioning if, if, if it's decided that, you know, on the table, I guess, is, uh, Newton, I mean, Mr. Galway?
It would require another motion. You did not put a time limit on the first one. Therefore, it would ordinarily come up on your next agenda.
Okay. May I, may I withdraw my vote to, to, to-
You make a new, make a new motion.
Yeah, good. May I make a new motion that for item, uh, the, uh, adding the definition, adding campground resort, uh, item two and item three, that, uh, that be done within, what, ninety days? I mean, is that, I, I don't know, what's, what's the wording that should state? Within three months.
Do I have a second to that motion?
Yeah, I have a second, ma'am.
Okay. Motion then is to hold for ninety days to allow reconsideration of the writings and all in favor, raise your right hand. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda?
Madam Chair, if, uh, we've been going for an hour and forty minutes, uh, and it might take about five, five minutes to allow the room to clear-
Good idea.
-for the people who are just here for that, those items.
Would you call for a recess, Madam Chair?
We, then we will call for a recess of ten minutes. Sorry. Alright.[1420.41] Thank you, we are back in session now. Return to order. We appreciate those of you who have patiently waited till we move forward with the rest of the agenda. If we could move to old business at this time.
Madam Chair, we'll move to new business, if that's all right?
I mean, new business, I'm sorry.
No worries. Case number one, application twenty-five zero one Z Zulu, Mark Anderson, owner twenty-one twenty-five Jackson Road, Griffin, Georgia, three zero two two three, located in land lot two two six, the third land district. Parcel number two one two zero one zero zero seven B Bravo, consisting of two point two two acres. The applicant is requesting to rezone from R two, single-family residential, to A R one agricultural residential to be able to use the property for more agricultural purposes, more specifically beekeeping and cultivation.
Madam Chair, item two is also related to this, and it's the same property. If you could, you may want to consolidate these for hearing as well, and then vote separately, that's a variance, and it's appropriate for it to come to you since you're having a zoning decision in the first application.
Thank you. So, I'm in favor of that, is that okay with the rest of the members of the board?
Yes.
We'll take both cases?
Right, case number two, application twenty-five zero one B Victor, Mark Anderson, owner twenty-one twenty-five Jackson Road, Griffin, Georgia, three zero two two three, located in land lot two two six, the third land district, parcel number two one two zero one zero zero seven B Bravo, consisting of two point two two acres. The applicant is requesting a variance in lot size due to rezoning. Just as a point of order, zoning attorney, do we need to close public hearing from the first public hearing that we had?
That would be the best policy, yes, sir.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I would ask that we close the public hearing for old business case one, two, and three.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for old business items one, two, and three.
You have a second? You have a second? All in favor, raise your right hand. And so it passes.
All right, thank you.
Now, you need a motion to consolidate items new business one and two.
Motion, motion. Motion to consolidate new business items one and two for purpose of hearing.
Second.
And all in favor, raise your hand. It has passed.
All right, at this time, you would need a motion to open public hearing for item number one and two for new business.
Do we have a motion for opening the discussion?
Go move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? If not, then we will vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. And it has passed.
Madam Chair, there is no one who has signed up for public hearing for these two, these two cases this evening.
Let me hear the staff's report, then.
Yes, ma'am, we do have the applicant here, if you want to hear from him briefly.
Do you want to, do you want to close public hearing?
He's here, he wants to speak.
Is the applicant going to speak?
Yeah.
Sir, we need you to, we need you to come up and-
Please come to the microphone. State your name and address.
My name is Mark Anderson, I'm at twenty-one twenty-five Jackson Road, oh, that place. And I'm here mainly because I've been employed for thirty years, my wife's sitting back there, who loves taking care of bees, and as much as I know about bees, she's basically told me to, you know, behave. So, that being said, moved out here about two years ago and found an old home, built in eighteen fifty's, or eighteen fifty-two, actually, it turns out it was built by my very, very distant relatives. And so, we took over the area, you know, took over the home, and went well beyond my means to do it. But, but we've made it our home, it's a beautiful old home, and it used to belong to the Hamel Corporation. And it was agriculture back then, it started off as lumber, went into agriculture, matter of fact, they even tracked down Bart Hamel and a few other relatives, they gotta get some history on the home as well. So, so it's got a lot of interesting history, it's old Greek revival home, which is very, very rare in the state of Georgia outside of any city. So, it's actually one of very few in existence in the state, actually, most of them are located inside the town. So, I've been doing a lot of, a lot of research on the side. But, anyway, we came from Arizona, I grew up in Roswell years ago, and basically, my wife's in the, in the beekeeping. And we, we found that it works really well with helping, you know, the, the local ecosystem and whatnot, and flowering and whatnot. And not only that, the medicinal benefits coming from honey that's actually grown in our community and redistributed amongst our community is, is, is very substantial. And a lot of people are starting to find out other benefits such as using beeswax for candles instead of paraffin, because paraffin is petroleum, and you actually burn petroleum in your home, it's probably not the best idea for people with health conditions, let alone anybody for that matter. So, there's a lot of different benefits and things like that. And so, basically, just wanted to come up here, it's my first time being in this kind of room anywhere in my life, so I do want to thank David for helping kind of put all of this together and, and make me look a little bit more coherent than I am on this matter. But definitely appreciate it, and if my, if my Latin is correct, I believe that says level mind or level spirit. And it means common sense, I guess, in the Latin term. And so, kind of something I learned just standing in this room today in Spaulding County. So, just one more thing to be proud of in this county, appreciate it, and if you have any questions, please let me know.
Have you, have you had an opportunity to read the suggestions from the staff and the recommendations for conditions, et cetera?
I did read the, I did read the proposal, but I don't know if, I don't remember seeing any recommendations in that. David might correct me.
Yeah, so, on the rezoning, he's going from R two to A R one, A R one has more agricultural options than R two. The only approval condition I had was if he had a roadside stand to sell the honey, that would be of a certain size. So, that was the only thing I had mentioned there in the staff report. The variance, as you said, goes hand in hand, if he rezones to A R one, he's got two point two acres. That drops him below the three, but that's really just changing the color of a parcel on a map, it's not really a big deal. He's not changing the property lines at all, so.
Yeah, and, and we're not gonna have a roadside stand, we want to go to local, you know, local businesses and support them and be able to do that rather than having a stand. Although, across the street was the old Hamel location where they would sell, you know, vegetables and fruits and stuff like that from what they would farm, but they, that gentleman who owns that, obviously, is not gonna do that anymore. But that would be our intent, so.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Circle one veteran to another, thank you for your service.
Amen.
You can now close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing, ma'am.
Motion to close public hearing for items one and two.
A second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, is there any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand, right hand. That motion has moved, has been approved. Now, we have a motion to move to the item at hand, do we have a motion on the, the rezoning case?
I make a motion, we accept the application.
We have a motion to accept the application?
Meaning to approve, meaning to approve, Ms. Harwood.
Mm-hmm, yes. The numbers, twenty? Whatever the numbers are.
So, this is a motion on the table to approve application twenty-five zero one Z Zulu, Mark Anderson, owner twenty-one twenty-five Jackson Road, Griffin, Georgia, three zero two two three, land lot two two six, of the third land district, parcel two one two zero one zero zero seven B, consisting of two point two two acres, where the applicant is requesting rezoning from R two to A R one for the purposes of beekeeping and cultivation. Is that your motion, Mr. Harwood?
Yes, that's what I said, yeah.
Read it into the record.
We have a, a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion, it has been made with a second, is there any discussion?
Well, I just, I just want to mention, I don't mean to be nitpicky. For those restrictions in the A R, A R one, does that need to say agricultural products versus other products in roadside stands?
Cam?
You know, I would hate to think that, you know, they would, they would change property and someone else come in and start selling something else that's not agricultural. And I'm not trying to be nitpicky, I'm just asking.
It can, yes. Other, they are-
I don't want to change the intent, I would, I, I like, I like everything here, it's just-
For other agricultural products, yes.
Sure, sure.
However, Mr. Harwood's motion did not reference a condition. So, we need to be certain before you vote that that is accurately stated.
Right, understood.
Mr. Brown, are you making amendment to the motion?
Yes, I would like to make a friendly amendment to that, if-
Mr. Harwood, would you accept the amendment?
Uh, yes, I will, ma'am.
All right, so, you have an amended motion on the table, Madam Chair.
The amended motion is on the table?
This is the second except.
I'll second.
It has now been seconded?
So, this is a motion to approve rezoning to A R one with the condition revised to read, selling honey or other agricultural products in a roadside stand.
Is there any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, then raise your hand on the amended moment, motion. It has passed unanimously.
And I've been a bee-
And now to the, I'm sorry?
I was just gonna make a comment, that I've been a beekeeper for years, and I appreciate you putting and taking care of the bees. Some of the best honey you'll ever eat comes out of Spaulding County. And you won't have to worry about selling in a roadside stand. People will come to your house and get it.
And this will go to the Board of Commissioners on February twenty-seventh for their final decision.
And now, as to the variance, twenty-five oh one V?
I'll make a motion to approve application twenty-five dash zero one V.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. All in, is there any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. It has passed.
Likewise, the Commissioners on February twenty-seven.
Thank you. All right. Now, we'll move to-
Madam Chair, application twenty-five zero one S Sierra, Jose Roberto Rodriguez Rivera, owner one twenty-one Meeks Street, Griffin, Georgia, three zero two two three, located in land lot two zero two, the third land district, parcel number two three nine zero six zero two one, consisting of one point nine seven acres. The applicant is requesting a special exception on A R one agricultural residential parcel to be able to keep and repla, and a, sorry, to keep a replacement mobile home on the property.
Is there anyone here to speak on this item? We have a, we'll open the public discussion then at this time?
We need to have a motion to have your pub, take public comment in public hearing.
Can we have a motion to have a public comment?
Second.
It's moved and seconded, we will open a public comment at this time? Please come forward, sir.
Did, did we take a vote on the motion?
No, we didn't.
We did not.
All in favor, raise your right hand, thank you. It has passed.
My English is not that well, so I'm gonna try to explain the best I can. I live in one twenty-five Meeks Street, and I bought this property a year ago. So, I wouldn't move a mobile home because I have my old mom that she wanted, I wanted to meet, I live next to me. But I've, I already got everything done, and I wish I can keep that mobile home because I really need her next to me.
Okay, are there any comments or questions for this applicant from the board? The staff give us some for it?
You want to, you need to close your public hearing, Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll learn this eventually.
You're fine.
This was, it's evidently new, because I've never done it in such, all these years.
There's something new to me, too.
It's, we've been doing it in order to make it clear when the public comment can be concluded.
So, do I have a motion to close the public?
Motion to close public comment.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded, all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, close, the public comment is closed. Now, do we have a motion on the application?
We need to have staff report, Madam Chair.
Staff, staff report?
All right.
So, mobile or manufactured homes are fairly limited now in the county, they're largely allowed in A R one zoning and R five zoning. One of the caveats, though, in A R one zoning is it is allowed, if it replaces a manufactured home located on the same property that was used as a dwelling, that's the key word there, used as a dwelling, within one hundred and eighty days prior to the date on which a permit was obtained or requested. We had learned from this, from code enforcement, that permits were not obtained nor inspections were done. And also, there is no evidence of a prior manufactured home being on this property within that one hundred and eighty day or six month threshold. Therefore, it is required to have a special exception to have a manufactured home on a property in this instance. However, since the home is already there, it's, it's an asking forgiveness rather than permission to keep it there. If you look at your pictures I provided in the staff report, it has a, it's on a permanent foundation now, it's not on an axle or anything where it could be moved easily, it has a brick skirt foundation, it's sheet rocked in, some new walls and things on the inside, it's unfinished. But that's where it stands right now, it's not ready to be lived in yet. But he has done considerable alterations to it. It's a decent-looking house. One of the other problems, though, is it is below the, the square footage for a house for this, which is fifteen hundred minimum, he is square feet, he has right around eleven hundred square feet, so he's four hundred feet short. So, if this was even approved, we'd have to either address that with a variance or you'd have to add on an addition, four hundred square foot addition to what he has out there. So, this is the situation we're in right now.
So, there is already an addition on it, but he's, he's gonna have to put another addition?
No, he, there was no home out there, he put a home, it's four hundred square feet below what it should be, if it's even allowed to stay, so.
It's my understanding, too, that when you do the half-mile radius of the area, it's lending more toward stick-built houses?
Uh, so, I do have the report here, I apologize for that being late, but I did forward that to y'all yesterday. Actually, the majority directly adjacent behind and in front is primarily mobile homes, the blue. As you go out further, there is obviously a single family, so, within the half-mile radius, I'd say it's half and half. But directly near there, in front and in back and on the side, there is mobile homes, so.
But when I was sent, showed a much bigger, taking in the whole half-mile radius, I thought there was much more, including that area down to where your thumb is. When you incorporate that, I thought there was much more stick.
Well, there, yeah, if you, there is more definitely, out there is totally single-family detached out that way, yes.
But it's basically a whole subdivision of almost a mobile home there, it's right middle of it.
Yeah, because once, once you go around that circle, or if you will, area, it's, it's predominant trend right there now.
Yeah. That one does look better than a lot of them out there.
Yes.
Is there then a motion to? Is there a motion on this case?
Well, I, I, you know, people don't follow the guidelines, but I do know that sometimes there are misunderstandings, people don't always know the details. But I think if, once that happens, if they're willing to come back and work to make the proper adjustments and revisions to, to meet the guidelines, that, that certainly should be considered. And so, it appears to me that what we have here on the staff recommendations is that with the recommended approval and following the minimal conditions to bring it up to the par, that they should be in compliance. So, with that being said, I'll make a motion to approve application twenty-five zero one S with the noted conditions within staff report.
We have a motion? Do we have a second to that motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll second, and maybe just a little discussion on that. David, do we know the square footage of, of approximate in that area? I mean, are the other mobile homes, are they in compliance? And I know that's just a lot of that.
Probably not, I don't have a firm number on that, but some of them look apparently small. Of course, they're mostly grandfathered- Of course, they're mostly grandfathered down, but.
Right, 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 yeah, that's what I was wondering if they've just been there awhile.
Yes.
Okay, that, that was, I was just curious about the surrounding square footages.
What's the minimum square footage for a, for a mobile home in that area?
For AR one, it's fifteen hundred heated.
What size lot?
I mean, you could build on a pre-existing lot, but if you made a new lot today, it'd have to be three acres.
Was he grandfathered back or not?
Lot size, yes. It's a legal, legal lot of record.
Is there any further discussion?
He, he either has to build four hundred more square feet, or he's got to get a variance. He can't just continue to sit as it is without further action.
Yes, yes.
Either building or approval of variance.
Which is reflected in number two of the approval conditions.
Correct, correct. And then his, Mr. Roberto, I'm sorry, I'm messing up your name. Ri- Ri- Riviera, talk, does he understand all this? You do? Okay, okay. And that's agreeable to you, what's written? Sorry, well, I wasn't having a turn there.
This is open discussion, so that's, that's fine, if there's.
Well, then, I'm, I'm, I'm ready to, my questions have been answered, so I'm ready to vote.
We have a motion and a second, so it's ready to vote on.
So all in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. It has passed unanimously.
Now, this is not a final decision, it'll be with the Board of Commissioners in the same room on February twenty seventh. I'll send you a letter about it, but they will make a final decision about it.
Madam Chair, case number four, application twenty-five zero two S John M. Shepherd the second, owner one zero four, Gainer Road, Griffin, Georgia three zero two two three, and Tower Engineering Professionals Incorporated. Applicant located in Land Lot one one zero of the second land district parcel number two zero zero eight zero one zero five seven, consisting of four point nine two acres. The applicant is requesting a special exception on an AR one agricultural residential parcel for a new monopole telecommunications tower. We do have someone signed up for public hearing, Madam Chair.
I may, make a motion to open the floor for public hearing.
That's second.
Yes, all in favor, please raise your right hand. The public hearing is open for any comments that anyone would like to bring.
Mr. Alan Fenton?
Is that all for me?
Thank you, appreciate. Please state your name and give us your address.
Yes, my name is Alan Fenton. I live at and own one oh eight Gainer Road, the property adjacent to where they wanna build the cell tower. I'm here along with Mr. Thomas, he lives on the same road. And what I've given you is an outline, and I just wanna go over it briefly. And it's, I'm in opposition, obviously, to the tower being constructed. And the issues I've listed here, the first is human health effects, which, you know, we can discuss if you want, but if you go to the very next page, there's a chart or a graph that shows all the effects in the distance that you need to be away from them. And if you actually go to, I think it's the very last, very last page, there's a geographic shot of the land, did you all see that? Okay, in the center, do you see the center there? That's where the proposed tower is gonna be. And all those lines are going to houses in that vicinity there that are within roughly five hundred feet of that cell tower, okay? And my house, just so you'll know, is if you, if you're looking at it straight up, if you go right to the left there, you'll see a house to the left there, kind of where the curve is, sitting on the curve, that's my house. It might be consumed, that also outlines the appro- approximately his property line and my property line. And, you know, my property, well, obviously it's adjacent, so, and it's gonna be probably well within three hundred feet of the actual tower itself. Okay, and so the other issue, obviously, proximity. And there's, if you go to the very next area there, there's showing safe distance, and I just highlighted on y'alls what you have there. It says placing cell towers five hundred meters away from schools and hospitals could save companies and, and trouble down the road for, you know, these kind of issues for cell towers, which is essentially sixteen hundred feet. And all these houses are well within the sixteen hundred feet. So, I mean, they're trying to do something that isn't good business. Alright. And then the other issue is obviously whenever you put something like this in an area, it's gonna, the property values are gonna decline. And if you go to the next section that I've handed there, it's highlighted and it shows the approximate amount that the values decreased, do you see that there? Okay. Alright, so, and finally, I don't know, you probably aware of this, but there's a map there that shows bird migration, do you see that? Alright, and obviously you can see the, the lighted area, the area that's lighting there. And you can see, when you look at the Georgia portion of it, that it goes right through our area here. And my house, and Mr. Thomas can attest to this, when birds are migrating heavily, thousands of birds go right over my house. And if you put that tower up there, you're gonna have a lot of dead birds on Gainer Road, cause they're gonna run into it. Okay, my final thought is that if, yeah, I'm totally opposed to it, I don't wanna see it no way, no how. But if you do actually approve something like this, that the people that are affected by this in the neighborhood be compensated by the cell tower people. You know, if it's, if it reduces our property value by ten percent, then we should be compensated. They shouldn't profit at our loss, is the point I'm making. Okay, do you have any questions? I don't know.
We appreciate your comments, thank you very much. Do I have a motion to close the public, is there anyone else who would like to speak?
You have the applicant?
Yes.
Sir, if you'd state your name and the, your address for the record, please.
Good evening, my name is Harold Timmons. I didn't know I needed to put my name on the list as applicant, so I apologize for that if it created any confusion. Address is ten seven hundred Sites Place, Charlotte, North Carolina. I'm here tonight representing the property owner, but I'm also representing Verizon Wireless as the applicant for this particular structure, can you hear me?
Yes.
I have a presentation that I've prepared that I'd like to go through. Yes. That one. Can I change the page or you'll have to change it?
It's in PDF, so I'll have to scroll.
Okay, okay, alright, next, next slide.
Alright, could I ask a question, point of order?
Point of order, yes.
Does he have to have an authorization letter for this board from the applicant to represent him?
We have a, we have an authorization letter in our application packet granting us the ability to represent the property owner and Verizon Wireless.
The answer would be, this would be just like any other application, the owner, the ordinance requires the owner or a person having at least fifty-one percent ownership has to identify their consent.
It's in there in the middle of the lengthy staff report for the application, yes.
Okay, so you do have that, okay, I just wanted to find out.
No problem, I understand. Next, as I, I've introduced myself, also had my, another person from TEP here earlier, Abby Porter, she had to leave to catch a flight. Next slide. Our proposal is for a hundred and fifty-five foot steel monopole structure with a ten foot lightning rod atop and related ground equipment. There'll be no lighting requirement from the FAA. And the tower will be designed with breakpoint technology, which means that if there is ever, ever a catastrophic failure, it will fall upon itself, which means in essence it remains on the property. Our lease area is a hundred feet by a hundred feet, basically ten thousand square feet. We're gonna enclose that lease area with a six foot tall chain link fence with three strands of barbed wire atop for total height, fence height of seven feet. The tower will be designed to allow co-location. Verizon Wireless will be the anchor tenant, and the tower will be able to accommodate additional users in three additional locations for a maximum capacity of four users. As far as traffic is concerned, there'll be no discernible impact along Gainer Road as our carriers make approximately one trip per month, some make one trip per quarter. Next slide. This is a map of the subject property and the star is the indication of where we would like to locate the structure on this particular parcel. Next, next slide. This is an elevation view of the tower itself, hundred and fifty-five feet as I indicated, Verizon, the initial tenant structural capacity for total of four users. Next slide. This is an aerial view of the site plan. This shows our access way from Gainer Road into the property. It runs three hundred and eighteen feet to the lease area. We set the tower in the center of the compound, that's another fifty feet, for a total of three hundred and sixty-eight feet from the road to the tower itself. We have a thirty foot wide ingress and egress easement. We will build a twelve foot wide gravel road within that thirty feet. And the remainder we'll utilize for placing our utilities, power, telco, and fiber underground in that, in that easement. Next slide. This shows the interior aspect of the compound itself, where the tower is located and where Verizon's equipment will be located within that compound. There's also some indications of where we'll have our fence and where our landscaping will be located. Next slide. This is an example of the landscaping plan that we've put together that's, that is in our drawings. So the landscaping will go on the outside of the chain link fence that I described earlier. Next slide. This is an example of the fence details, six foot tall chain link fence with three strands of barbed wire atop. Next slide. We're gonna get into now the radio frequency justification that Verizon Wireless has provided, because they were the ones who initiated us to do the search for this particular, particular site. Next slide. Okay. What we, what I'm showing you here is the red circle is the search ring that Verizon initiated us to, to seek out a site for them. That search ring is six tenths of a mile in a radius. The yellow line, the yellow circle, is the two and a half mile radius that is discussed in the zoning ordinance and mentioned in the staff report in terms of us looking within that two and a half mile area and locating existing structures and talking to those, those property, those owners of those towers. Next slide. The area in the black line is the area of service. It's the area of service that Verizon wants to serve with this particular structure. The dots along the perimeter, those are existing towers that comprise the existing Verizon network that is serving this area. Next slide. This map shows the distance of those existing Verizon towers that comprise its network, the distance that they are from this proposed site. Any number of, there's a number of them that are two point two, two point eight, four miles and so forth away from this particular location and the signal they're trying to reach into this particular area. Next slide. This is another map that was prepared. The red circle represents the six tenth of a mile search area. And the blue lines run to additional sites that when we looked at it, we were, we found these additional structures, but they are all outside of the six tenth of a mile service area. Next slide. Now, this is the existing coverage that Verizon has put forth as, that is currently going on from the existing network they have. From all of the existing sites that I showed you earlier and pointed out, they're also shown on this map as well. The green and yellow areas are areas that Verizon finds desirable, that works within their network. The customers can access the network and use the network in a fashion that they find to be acceptable for their customers. The red areas are the areas, and blue areas are the areas that they want to improve because they're poor coverage areas. Customers cannot either access them or they cannot utilize them in the ways that they need to, that the customers utilize the services. Mostly, you've got mostly data transmission, uploads, downloads and things of that nature, as well as outside of your house, making phone calls or in your car, you can't make a phone call or you make a phone call and you immediately drop it because the coverage is poor. Next slide. If this site is approved by this county, this is how that area is going to actually improve based on this particular site. And it cleans up the red areas significantly, I think. There's still something to the south that needs some cleanup and more than likely, there's probably heavy foliage or something in that area that's affecting the signals transmission in that particular direction. But it makes a significant change from what previously was to what is, can you go back one slide? Now go forward one, yeah, there you go. So, so you can actually see the actual change itself that occurs. Next slide. Now Verizon, we found a structure that was nine tenths of a mile from this proposed location. And Verizon ran a propagation model on utilizing that particular site. And what they, and as you can see, it doesn't clear up the, the poor areas. And what they state in their comments is that, and I'll read it quickly. "As shown, except for the southern western area of the desired service area, there is no improvement of in-building or in-car coverages in the northeast and southeast areas of the desired service area. Also, location of the CCAT LLC tower is too close to the existing Verizon site, Highway one fifty-five McDonnell Road, causing too much overlap with existing coverage, which is not efficient for a new site investment and also increased unwanted interference as a result. As a result, the CCAT LLC tower is not a good location to solve the desired coverage objectives." So, we did look at existing structures. Some were significantly- Some were significantly too far away from the six-tenth of a mile engineered area. They did look at one that was nine tenths of a mile away, and found that it's actually located too close to an existing site that they're using, and it also does not provide the same level of coverage in terms of resolving the problem that exists within the network that they desire. Next slide. In terms of compliance, Verizon complies with all federal, state, and local requirements. Their communication sites are operated at a small percentage of FCC emission requirements. Facilities are inspected by internal and third-party entities at regular intervals to ensure proper operation and compliance, and communication facilities can be found anywhere from hospitals and schools to single-family lots. Next slide. The proposed location was the result of reaching out to property owners in the area and finding an owner that had an interest. And the subject property has a little, has a little blue line around it, I don't know if you can see it from there, but that's the subject property. Our search involved looking at this six-tenth of a mile area, understanding what the zoning was, looking at the lot sizes, and trying to determine which lots we could fit a tower on and meet all of the zoning requirements of the ordinance. Our site acquisition agent engaged twelve different property owners, they sent out letters to twelve different owners, and we only got one response back, and that is this particular property owner. The fact of the matter is that, no matter how good a property is, if we don't have a property owner that is willing, then that property might as well not exist because we can't use it. We only can use properties that property owners want us to be on, so, that want to engage with us. The area is heavily wooded, and Verizon coverage is generally poor in the area. The immediate area is zoned agricultural residential. While the ordinance, as stated in the staff report, encourages the placement of towers in non-residential areas, this area has almost no non-residential zoning in the area. There is none within the search area, and a single non-residential zone parcel is approximately one mile to the west. So, while the ordinance is encouraging the placement of towers in a non-residential area, if non-residential areas were abundant in this area, we probably would have pursued those first. But given the widespread agricultural residential nature of the area and the zoning, we had actually no alternative but to end up with a property that's zoned AR1. Next slide. My final statements. There's been a determination by Verizon that there is a radio frequency needed in the area. The proposed structure assists with co-location in the area to further improve coverage throughout the community by allowing other carriers and other services to place their equipment on there should they desire. The requested tower height is the minimum height required to meet Verizon Wireless service objectives and provide seamless service to surrounding Verizon Wireless Network towers. The requirement of the county land development code has been applied, and the proposed complies, in our view, with the spirit and intent of the code requirements. A two-and-a-half mile search was conducted as required by the code. However, the RF engineering for this project was restricted by Verizon to a point-six-mile radius. Many of the towers out to two-and-a-half miles are structures that are already in-use by Verizon Wireless. As shown on the maps provided, the need was to zone a specific area with poor coverage. To ask tower owners about using their structures, their availability, or their capacity capability would have been of no engineering benefit to Verizon or its network due to improper location characteristics. So, that sums up why we looked at it, but we didn't necessarily go to the extent of asking the property owners, or the tower owners, within a two-and-a-half mile radius, if we could utilize their structure, because from an engineering standpoint, Verizon would have just rejected them and said, "No, we need something within this six-mile radius in order to meet our coverage objectives for the network." This is where it's gonna make the best, you're gonna have, you're gonna improve the network to the best of its ability in this particular area. If you go over and utilize one of the other structures, you end up, as a situation that we had, where you could possibly end up too close to an existing structure, you got interference issues. Or if you go in another area, then you gotta bring a second tower site somewhere else in order to fix that problem that you didn't fix with the first one, that this particular one could possibly fix. I also want to address two additional things that have been brought up. And if you will go down about, can you try to go down about three slides, I'll tell you when you stop. Right, keep going. Go one more. All right, well, yeah, go back up. All right, so that's, I'm missing a slide, but anyway, that's fine. I point this out because this is language that comes from the Federal Code of Regulations, and it talks about what local governments can and cannot do when they evaluate these particular kinds of requests. And basically, what they're saying here is that local jurisdictions basically have to refrain from making decisions regarding communication towers, bases, on the basis of environmental effects of radio frequency emissions. So, I just want, since that was brought up as an earlier comment, I wanted to ensure you that we are aware of that and what the law actually states. I had another slide that addressed cell towers and property values, but it didn't get into the newer version of it. And so, what I will basically say is that, in terms of property values, there's been plenty of studies that have been done. Most of them involve the use of real estate appraisers, and what they will have the tendency to do is they will evaluate an area where there's a tower being proposed or a tower exists. They'll go back through a few years, and they'll look at the real estate values prior to the construction of the tower, and they'll look at the real estate values after the construction of the tower. And for the most part, there's no correlation between the change in values between, from pre-tower and post-tower. The factors that affect the values in the real estate are so wide and so varied that you can't actually pin them and relate them directly to the location of a communications tower. That's basically what these appraisal studies have been found to show. So, that has been my history with them. I've been in this industry over twenty-five years, and so, there's not been a real factor that anyone can, has ever been able to pin down and say, "Yes, the property values have gone down because of the location of a communications tower." And so, with that, I will sit down, and I will answer any questions that you might have, and hope that you will recommend approval for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Are there any questions for this applicant?
I have a question, I guess, regarding maybe that drawing E three point one.
Is it?
And that's your access road, and then the property for the tower.
Yeah, keep going, keep going, no, no. Oh, it's up, it's near the beginning.
Right, yeah, near the beginning. I just found it easier in the materials.
I think it's one more, right there. That one?
Yeah, I mean, that will work, that will work. Because I noticed all that area is wooded, so you're just gonna be cutting in an access road in what is necessary for that proposed lease area.
That is correct. We only want to clear the very minimum in order to put the road in and the compound itself. So, we're basically gonna carve out within the existing forestation what we need, and then we're also gonna plant landscaping around that fence area as well.
And it's probably on here, but what's that distance to Mr. Fenton's house?
I believe, I calculated from the tower to the house that's in the curve, which is now identified as Mr. Fenton, I identified that as three hundred and forty-four feet.
Okay.
And the property adjacent to it is three hundred and sixty-eight, the property to the east about four hundred and forty, and properties across the road are in the seven to eight hundred foot range.
Okay, yeah, there we go.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to close the public comment? And a second?
Yeah, second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public comment. All in favor, raise your right hand. That moves by. Motion is passed. Do we have any comments from the commissioners?
I just have a question here. David, I see where you recommended disapproval on this because they didn't do their homework as far as contacting these other providers around.
Yes, sir.
Is there any other reason you denied this other than that?
Well, the main, you know, I don't know about the zero-point-six-mile radius, and obviously it looks like some of the coverage improves, but one of the main intents with the appendix I is to, let me read it verbatim here. "Encourage the location of towers in non-residential areas and minimize the total number of towers in Spalding County." So, this is very close to, obviously, several houses.
And I noticed something else, too, that all this property, there was one map back there that showed where all this land had been surveyed evidently and was laid off into lots around there. How much impact is this gonna have as far as somebody buying, when there's lots and building on them? That's gonna put it in a residential area, then, correct?
Impossible to determine, but I'm sure it would be a factor if somebody saw it, the tower.
Okay.
I'll address that, Mr. Hargreaves, and follow up on what David said. We haven't had a cell tower, standard cell tower, in a while. And, Mr. Timmons, I assume there's no 5G small cell that's available out there in this area? Okay.
I would say there's not available, but it's not characteristic of this particular type of area. In a small cell, you're only, you're about a thousand feet.
David's judgment, David's advice or discussion is accurate from the standpoint of subsection G, excuse me, of the tower ordinance, let me get the exact section. That is section two of the tower appendix, which is appendix I, Spalding County Ordinance to Establish Standards for Telecom Towers. We require an affidavit that, from the applicant, that covers and identifies two-and-a-half mile radius from the location of the proposed tower. Now, and we require that that affidavit identify the effort to contact the owner of each tower, and if they are not satisfactory, to provide an explanation. Now, Mr. Timmons has provided an explanation, but having read the affidavit, y'all say that y'all didn't contact them. So, David has made a call on the basis that that is not compliant with the specific requirements of the ordinance, because the ordinance says shall. Now, I do want to briefly address two other things. Number one, Mr. Timmons has accurately identified rulings of the FCC that are in the regulations governing the evidence that cell towers cause certain health consequences. That what he's identified as the FCC reg, or comes out of an FCC order, is put in the Code of Federal Regulations, is accurate. I would also advise you that, under FCC rules and another FCC order, a cell tower may be denied on the basis of clear and convincing evidence. Because the FCC has established a policy that says they favor the deployment of cell towers. Now, we have requested, and our ordinance provides, for that to be established by means of evidence of inability to co-locate and a gap in propagation maps, which Mr. Timmons has addressed. But, they are not in compliance with that provision of the tower ordinance. Now, that is a remediable circumstance, but as we sit here right now, I would have to make the call, as David did, that we do not have an application that is in compliance with subsection G of section two. Now. So, I wanted to go over that because I wanted to make certain we're on the same page, and make certain that y'all understood the standards you're reviewing, under which you're reviewing, and the confirmation that evidence related to certain health conditions, arguments about certain health conditions, are not to be considered. And the FCC takes, the FCC's regulations on this, because of their position in regulating telecommunications and towers, including landline and cell, are going to preempt much of state law.
Ask questions with?
This is, this is, this is an open, for discussion from the commissioners, please.
Oh, so that the key word to me was that clear and convincing evidence, Newton. And I understand David following the ordinance, and I do appreciate that, but it sounds like in Mr. Timmons talking that those were all Verizon towers, and why would I go ask permission to put another, I don't know what they're called, but on a tower that doesn't even cover their coverage area that they want? That's where I'm stuck, because the existing towers out there wouldn't get them the coverage, because that point of that tower has got to be pretty close to that to get that polygon for the coverage. Is that somewhere right, Newton? I mean, of, because I can't come up in my mind, it's clear and convincing evidence. If, of course, and I know that's an ask, they want to improve customer satisfaction.
Well, in the affidavit, because David and I were reviewing this as the presentation being given, the affidavit specifically says, "The area of search was limited to point-six miles. The applicant did not contact the owner-operator of each tower to advise them of applicant's needs and requirements for the placement of applicant's tower antenna on the tower as it could not have met the applicant's engineering criteria." Okay, that may be perfectly true, but it is not compliant with the, with section G of, subsection G of section two of the tower.
Other comments? Commissioners?
Leave that up to y'all.
I'll be, we'll, is there a motion?
I will make a motion that we deny. Special exception twenty-five days, zero-one S.
Do I have a second to the motion to deny?
Well, I'll second.
Give a motion to deny with a second? All in favor, raise your hand. That's the majority.
Mr. Timmons, that is a recommendation only. This goes to the Board of Commissioners, and I would advise that we, I mean, you have the opportunity to amend this to give us the affidavit that's in compliance.
Right, that's what I was going to suggest, that we could defer it for thirty days. We could go back, do the work that we do, and submit it back to David. We go back to the PC so that you can see. We go back to the PC so that you can see we actually fully comply. But we can do that between now and the board.
That is correct.
I would do that, yes.
That's correct.
February twenty-seventh, I'll get some more information about it, but if I could have it like the week before that, ideally, at the latest.
We'll get on that immediately. Thank you very much.
All right, next application is application twenty-five zero-one Flume. Raul Metias, Metias. Owner twenty-four oh-seven Old Atlanta Road, Griffin, Georgia, three zero two two-three, located in Land Lot one zero one of the third land district parcel number one zero four zero five zero zero nine, consisting of eleven point five four acres. The applicant is requesting to rezone from R-two, single-family residential, and C-one highway commercial to R-six, planned residential community for a townhome development in a commercial corridor, suburban transition area, thus requiring a future land use map amendment.
So, Mr. Chairman, at, at the Board's pleasure, items five through ten on new business all have to do with two adjacent properties for the same townhome development, which if approved would be combined. Uh, so it's up to the Board, but you could possibly combine those public hearings for the sake of time?
I would, I would move, or make a motion for that to combine all together for, for public hearing purposes.
There've been a motion made to combine items five through ten to be discussed together. Is there a second to that?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any other comments? All, well, then we, we're ready for a vote. All in favor of combining items five through ten, please raise your hand. It passes unanimously.
Madam Chair, I'll read the remainder into the record. Application twenty-five zero-two Flume, North Expressway, Incorporated owner twenty-two thirty North Expressway, Griffin, Georgia, three zero two two-three, located in Land Lot one zero one of the third land district parcel number one zero four zero five zero one zero, consisting of two point two four acres. The applicant is requesting to rezone from C-one highway commercial to R-six, planned residential community for a townhome development in a commercial corridor, suburban transition area, thus requiring a future land use map amendment. Number seven, application twenty-five zero-two Z, Rural Metias. Owner twenty-four oh-seven Old Atlanta Road, Griffin, Georgia, three zero two two-three, located in Land Lot one zero one of the third land district parcel number one zero four zero five zero zero nine, consisting of eleven point five four acres. The applicant is requesting to rezone from R-two, single-family residential, and C-one highway commercial to R-six, planned residential community for a townhome development. Number eight, application twenty-five zero-three Z, North Expressway Incorporated, owner twenty-two thirty North Expressway, Griffin, Georgia, three zero two two-three, located in Land Lot one zero one of the third land district parcel number one zero four zero five zero one zero, consisting of two point two four acres. The applicant is requesting to rezone from C-one highway commercial to R-six, planned residential community for a townhome development. Number nine, application twenty-five zero-two V, Rural Metias. Owner twenty-four oh-seven Old Atlanta Road, Griffin, Georgia, three zero two two-three, located in Land Lot one zero one of the third land district parcel number one zero four zero five zero zero nine, consisting of one one point five four acres. The applicant is requesting a variance for rear access and certain amenity requi, uh, requirements for a townhome development. Number ten, application twenty-five zero-three V, North Expressway Incorporated. Owner twenty-two thirty North Expressway, Griffin, Georgia, three zero two two-three, located in Land Lot one zero one of the third land district parcel number one zero four zero five zero one zero, consisting of two point two four acres. The applicant is requesting a variance for rear access and certain amenity requirements for a townhome development. Is number eleven also included?
Yes, sir, that is only that.
Thank you, so that, that completes, uh, the combined number of cases.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
That's so moved.
Still moved with a second?
Second.
We have a second. We are now open for public hearing.
You need to take a, Madam Chair, you need to take a vote. You have a motion and a second, but you didn't vote.
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand. That's a, the motion has passed. Are there anyone who would like to make, or do you have any?
Yes, ma'am, um, we, we do have, um, those who would like to speak publicly, Evangeline Owen.
My name is Evangeline Owen. I live at one oh-four West Morland Drive.
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt. Could you move that microphone a little closer so I can hear?
Thank you. Thank you. My name is Evangeline Owen. I live at one oh-four West Morland Drive. I was born in Spalding County and lived here my whole life. I thought our public officials would take care of us, but obviously not. Um, I, I don't have lawyers, I don't have fancy presentations, I don't have money backing. I'm just gonna give you my opinion. Um, we're a small neighborhood and from the expressway to the Old Atlanta Highway, north and south, are single-family residents with yards and families. It's a quiet neighborhood, and if they'll, if you allow this to go through with all these, there, there, there'll be townhouses with no yards. They'll wipe out all the trees, that's the buffer in there. And there's sewage, there's condensed traffic from everywhere coming through there. And it will be from the expressway all the way through to the Old Atlanta Highway. And we want to oppose it. We hope y'all will look out for us and stop this, because big money can go anywhere. They can go somewhere else. They don't need us. We need to be left alone. It's a nice neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lindsay Hartman.
Um, Lindsay Hartman, two-eleven West Morland Drive. Um, I'm not gonna take as long as everybody else takes, I know we're all tired, so I'm gonna try to go quick. Um, thank you for the opportunity for the neighboring property owners, for Sunset and West Morland, to come to speak to you today. Um, the property changes are for the lots adjacent to my backyard. I would like to start by stating that, um, we were in no, my family and I were in no opposition to the original requested change for the parcel number ending in ten, that was originally proposed to go from C-one to R-two. We would not have faulted that at all. Um, in fact, we supported that change to preserve the current structure of our residential community and control the density. However, we received the updated notice that R-two is no longer being considered, but now R-six for this lot and the lot of nine. I'm in opposition to the proposal to change from R-two and C-one to R-six for those lots, and I have four key points. First, high-density residential areas statistically increase the crime rates of the area. Um, we've worked really hard with the Spalding County Sheriff's Department to maintain the safety of our area. Um, and we have very, very low usage of their services, and we're proud of that. Um, and we would like to keep it that way to keep our children and grandchildren safe. Um, we've increased the families and not just, um, partnerships of our neighborhood. Um, so there are now lots of children in our area. Number two is with the noise levels. Um, we're concerned because we have a very, very quiet neighborhood. Even with multiple homes with children now residing on the street, the loudest noises heard are those of the children's laughter, or as the lady said earlier, the snow brought them all outside. Um, and I'm not just referring to noises that the construction sounds may bring during the development, but also the noise nuisances brought about by congested residential proximities of these planned townhouse commu, townhouse communities, excuse me. Thirdly, this area is district to the Cowan Road Elementary and Middle Schools. Um, both of my children attend Cowan Road Elementary. Um, the state classroom sizes max out a little over twenty-eight to thirty-five. Most of our classrooms are at twenty-five to twenty-eight right now, and if we add additional residential areas that could bring more children, um, we have to consider the impacts that will also have to our school system, not just our residential communities. Um, and that's the structured, traditional classroom sizes. That doesn't even take into account inclusive and separate special education classrooms that may be affected. Fourth, we're concerned with the potential that a townhouse community has on lowering our property values while we simultaneously deal with the rising property taxes due to inflation. We've already seen the impacts of the recent one hundred and twenty-unit tranquility apartment complex that was added to our area. That includes increased foot and vehicle travel on our road. A lot of people didn't even know our road existed until they walked out of their apartments after that complex was built, and now they see our road. Um, and that is from across nineteen forty-one. These issues will only be exacerbated once this townhouse, townhome community is in our backyard. Finally, in review of the Spalding County zoning details, it indicates that in order to proceed with the proposed changes, the individual proposition, or the individual proposing must justify that an unnecessary hardship is created by the current property type. I challenge this argument that an unnecessary hardship has been created, as all of the lots on Sunset and on West Morland are R-two and R-three. Um, I stand to ask why an R-two or an R-three development was not considered before the proposal for an R-six. With these comments, I strongly urge you to consider the requested change for the parcels of nine and ten and help us preserve the sanctity, sanctity and safety of our residential area, the area that we proudly call home. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Michael Pryor.
I just thought I had the worst job in the county until I sit here tonight with y'all's meeting. Uh, none of my people talk back, so, uh, it makes things much easier. What are you, what are you laughing at? Okay, my name is Michael Pryor. I live at one zero-two Sunset Drive. Uh, this actual, uh, backs right up to my backyard. Uh, there's a couple of issues that I have with it, first being that we already have an erosion problem there from the runoff. We're in the lowest part of the, the area up there, too. I cannot keep topsoil now in my backyard from the runoff that happens there now. This particular eleven acres has been, uh, there's a reason that nothing has ever built on it. I have lived up there my entire life. There's a reason that there's nothing built on it. It will not perk. Okay, it does not perk. So that's the reason there's not any houses on that side. That's the reason it's not anything that has been built in there at all on things. Now, I want to back up something that they said on, on things earlier. Uh, we all know what rental property does, okay? I'm not knocking anybody at rents, but dense, high-density rental property like that, it brings in issues and it brings in problems. I wonder how long our county's gonna keep allowing these to come in when we're, I know we're trying to get our identity and we're trying to do what we need to do on things, but I'm sorry, the high-density housing is not the way to go on things. We're gonna end up here before too much longer. We're gonna be Clayton County and Henry County, and we're gonna have more apartments in town than we have homeowners. Okay, that is an issue and that is a problem. Right, so the other thing I want to bring up is the traffic. Uh, if you come down Old Atlanta early in the morning around work time now, or you come in there, uh, late in the afternoon, it's backed up just like it is at nineteen forty-one now. Everybody uses Old Atlanta as a cut through. I understand why they do, but it backs traffic up. We got a four-way stop there at Vineyard. There's nothing, uh, to the right until you get to Experiment. Uh, the traffic issue will, will definitely give us a problem on things if we have that, if we have this high-density housing coming in there. There's one more thing I want to do. If you could go back to that very first slide that you had up at the very beginning. The very first one. Where it had what, what we were, what they, what they were asking for on the zoning.
You mean on this case?
It's on this case, Chris.
It's over five hundred page document. That's what it's hard to find.
This case?
Yeah, uh, is there a page number anybody can see?
What page does it say on y'all's packet?
Two thirty-five?
Two thirty-five?
Because there's one, there was one point in it I think answers our, our questions on how this can be done, okay? There it is, go back.
Okay.
Okay. And I think this should answer the Board's question right here. It says the commercial corridor suburban transition area is gonna require a future land use map amendment. Well, we don't need them anything. We just leave it just like it is right now and everybody be happy. Thank you.
Leonard Phillips. Leonard Phillips? All right. Madam Chair, that's all that has signed up for these cases this evening.
We thank you for your comments. Do I have a motion to close the public, well, let's hear from the applicant.
Mister Dudek here.
Thank you.
Been a long night, excuse me? Good evening, Board. My name is Hank Dudek. I'm with Devon Riley LLC. Uh, we're the developer on this project. We're looking to-
I'm sorry, we can't understand you.
Can you hear me?
That's much better, thank you.
Yeah, I think this one doesn't extend downward, so I'll lean down. Uh, my name's Hank Dudek. I'm with Devon Riley LLC. Uh, we're proposing, uh, seventy-seven townhomes, single-family townhomes on approximately thirteen acres. Um, I understand the concerns of the homeowners. Uh, the way we routed the street that we're putting through there, we're making a direct line, and we're not cutting into West Morland, and we're not cutting into Sunset. Obviously, we don't want to disrupt the life, lives of these folks and to put them in any kind of disarray. Uh, we are planning to keep the trees as buffers. That would be our goal. We want to create a nice community. We do not want to rent a bunch of, uh, single-family townhomes. That is not our goal. Our goal is to build, uh, single-family townhomes for people to come live in and become part of the community, uh, if we were able to get the approval. So I want to make sure we understand that that is not the goal here. We did- So they say let it be a house, but if you look at the best use of this property, there's a reason. He said it was the perk test. But we have public sewer which we can access for the property, which is not a problem. Um, but if you look at the, the options here, you either run a street down one side, so you could go down closer to West Morland, or you could cut in on West Morland, and then you'd have to run more streets in just to do, if you wanted to do, say, R-twenty. So it doesn't, the lot itself doesn't work for that. So it's up to you, I guess, to figure out, do we really want to do something here, or do we just let this sit and it just sits in perpetuity? Uh, I think we've come up with a good plan, one that, again, based on the fact that you guys have R-six zoning. Every other zoning we've ever done for townhomes, whether it's Cobb County or it's, uh, Smyrna, I mean, you're getting eight to ten townhomes. Here, it's six townhomes, max. And even with that, you know, there's some stuff, you know, David put, I got, I got the notice yesterday. Normally, we would clean up some of these comments before we get to, to the zoning meeting, um, just to make sure we're all aligned on it, but some of the comments, you know, about the impervious, you know, there are limitations there. If, I guess my question would be, if the impervious, the maximum is twenty-five percent, and, and we have R-six zoning, how do you get to R-six if we've met all of the guidelines? How can we get to R-six? We've met all of the guidelines, but we're exceeding the impervious. I've never had that happen in any zoning meeting. So I, I'm just bringing that up. Whether we get approved or not, something for you to consider down the line, because I might not be the first person to say that. Uh, and maybe the goal is not to have townhomes ever approved. I don't know. Um, if that's the case, then, then it's not an issue, but I'm just bringing that up because the impervious was mentioned on our, on our notes. And there were some other, you know, some other restrictions as well, which, depending on, you know, any questions that you have, I'd like to discuss as well. So I'll, I'll leave it at that right now.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to close the public comment?
Yes, I'd like a motion.
I have a motion to close the, I have a second? All in favor, please raise your hand. The public comment is closed. We'll hear a staff report.
Yes, ma'am, so I'll, for the sake of time, also attempt to combine these staff reports as best I can. Uh, basically, this involves two pieces of property. The larger one is to the south. It currently has a split zoning of C-one and R-two. The one just above that, the smaller square, is C-one. Uh, obviously, this will require rezoning to go to R-six for both those parcels. If approved, they would combine them into one per your site plan that was provided, showing the layout of the townhomes. First things first, uh, we do have a future land use map as referred to. Um, these properties are definitely in the commercial corridor on our future land use map that we currently have. Also, they are in the suburban transition character area as well. Um, while suburban transition is technically, uh, what townhomes can be a part of going from single-family to a more of a multifamily or a single-family attached to a commercial, the commercial corridor aspect alone requires you have a flume amendment, future land use map amendment on this. Let me read to you from the character areas. First, the commercial corridor. This is from the comp plan directly. The 1941 corridor is commercially zoned along its length, making additional commercial development likely. The county's Northeast Expressway Improvement Overlay District, which was adopted in 2022 and which this property is also a part of, allows additional permitted uses including residential and mixed-use developments along the corridor. So based on this, R6 zone townhome development would be compatible with that northeast, I'm sorry, North Expressway Improvement Overlay District in the commercial corridor area. I don't have issues with the flume amendments themselves. However, as on the rezoning applications, I do have issues with that based on not meeting all of the R6 requirements. There are several here in addition to what he's asking for the variances. He did mention the impervious area. There's a maximum of 25% impervious on here. He has well exceeded that. There are also several of the amenities mentioned in R6 which are not provided for. Now, some of those are, in my estimation, more important than others. I'm not sure about, you know, swimming pool and things of that nature, but you do have a... What am I trying to say? Clubhouse area and things of that nature which are not provided as well. Also, the heated floor area of the dwelling unit. His proposed units are 1,100 square feet total heated. R6 standards call for 1,250 at least. So there's some areas like that.
Could I have order, please? We're hearing the staff's report at this time. Thank you.
So on that, there are some R6 development standards which have not been met. Now, he is asking for two variances. One of those is not having rear entry garages as R6 calls for. I don't necessarily have a problem with that. I've been around some rear entry, especially townhomes. It's not a good circulation pattern as far as the alleys you have to have. And his other variance request is for the rest of the amenities he does not have on there. He shows a fireplace area, gazebo, dog park, some guest parking, some green space areas. But as I said before, certain things like tennis ball or I guess you could say pickleball, clubhouse, things like that are not provided. He did mention the challenge of this property and getting the required number of units he wants, obviously, to meet his profit goals, which is understandable. However, you know, the narrowness of the property, the smallness of the property relatively speaking makes some of these standards hard to obtain. So I do have issues, not necessarily with the variance request or the flume, but as far as the rezoning itself, I have some pretty significant issues with the site plan provided.
Thank you.
Can I ask for, what pages was that, David? I was trying to flip through this that you were talking about, your recommendation page?
I don't have the same...
Okay, sorry.
The corresponding page.
It's the back of 415.
415, okay.
It's not numbered, but it is the back of that page.
Ah, there we go. Thank you. I was looking at where you're...
That's one set of the staff's comments.
That's what I was looking for. Okay, thank you.
There are a lot of others.
Right, right, yes.
Bill, are you talking about the flume, right?
No, no, flume, I mean, I understand. It was just...
Rezoning.
Right, I was trying to, I'm sorry, look at it as David was talking. Visual, so, sorry.
David, would it be all key to ask what type of housing we're talking about here?
I know we're talking single-family detached townhomes, two-story, correct?
Mister Hank, if you would, please step to the microphone so we can hear. We're streaming this as video.
Apologies. As far as the total square footage, these will be well above the 1,250. If the minimum square footage for the townhomes is 1,250, are you saying just the floor is 1,250?
Heated floor area total.
Yeah, that's where I would get a little confused.
Okay, so you were saying the footprint is 1,100?
The footprint's 1,100.
I got you.
Right, and then the second floor, you're going to, it's going to be over, well over 1,250, well over, but it'll be 1,500 to 1,800 square foot townhomes. Just, yes, that's all I was going to add earlier as well.
And a question about who is your target homeowner? I mean, I don't know the price point you're looking at for these. Curious about another couple of things.
Yeah, and part of the amenity situation, it's just, I mean, it's about profit, but it's also about the ability to be able to sell these to people who are looking to buy a home in today's market as well. So when we're talking about, in one of my conversations with a builder, I said, hey, we've got a project down here. And he said, hey, I looked at the zoning on this. That's never going to work. You're never going to get that done. And it's too cumbersome. So that was his first initial thought. And I said, well, listen, you know, let me work on that part, but would you be interested? And he said, yeah, I mean, if you could get that done, we'd be interested in it. But I just don't see it based on the regulations that they have for so many amenities, like... So part of the reason we asked for the variance on the amenities is every time, like, if you build a clubhouse, you're looking at, just say, $300,000. You build a facility in there for, you know, them to work out, well, you've now, you know, another $40,000, $50,000. So the cost goes up to the actual purchaser, and then you add on to the HOA fees because you now have, you have liability that you have. And then now you've opened up the door to somebody coming in, say, to your clubhouse and they're, you know, who knows what happens, but they could come in, they could spray paint it. Even in my neighborhood, they've got vagrants that come in and break into our clubhouse to swim tennis. And we've had issues with that. So it just creates a lot of cost. We're trying to do nice stuff, you know, a gazebo with, you know, picnic benches for them to be able to come enjoy the dog park and do a fire pit. So we're doing things, I think, that the community would enjoy within there, but also not creating extra cost or extra liability for them because 77 townhomes is not a lot of townhomes when you look at the amount of land. So I just want to make sure, as far as what our vision is, it is not to not give them something. And also, there's 10 local gyms in the area. The idea with the commercial corridor is how do we support the local businesses, the small businesses? That's the idea behind it. For a pricing range, I think you're looking realistically in the mid to high 2s starting. And then from there, depending on how they sell. And again, it's the demographic situation. The builder I was talking to today said, Hank, he goes, I've got a property that we're trying to sell in Billerica. He goes, you know, when you get these HOA, you know, cost up because you're building the clubhouses, they take the HOA fees and they add that into their FHA loan or whatever it might be. And that then gets through debt encumbration and kicks them out. So you've got to be able to keep that down or it doesn't make any sense for us to come, you want to come in there and build it. So those are the things that we have to think about. And again, from the economics of it, how do we get homeowners to come in here? How do we get them qualified? How do we get good neighbors? How do we get ownership in Griffin? I've heard a lot of people talk tonight. You know, they love, you know, Griffin, they love Spalding County. And we're trying to help other people want to have some homeownership and enjoy that as well. The tranquility apartments is not something that we think we compete with. We're trying to get people into homeownership. So that's, to me, a completely separate... And maybe it doesn't always work out that way, but we're not looking to bring in a company to do build-to-rent, you know, BlackRock to come in here and do this. We're trying to find a builder who will, you know, agree to build here and to build single-family homes that people will come live in and be on our equity. Any other questions for, I get in trouble, step away.
Just have to...
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, talk about, are there sidewalks proposed in here?
There are. So that's the other thing.
In your HOA?
Correct. There would be an HOA. And, I mean, I think that's required, but we would, either way, we'd have an HOA. So the requirements are very strict, like I said, for R6. So we have to put sidewalks in. You know, you want parking for driveways to make sure we don't have cars sitting out on the street. Then we want extra additional parking, which, of course, you know, we don't want to bug the neighbors. We want everything self-contained. And when it comes to runoff, I heard the neighbor talking about the runoff, we've got two storm water management systems, as you can see on the plan, that, again, part of the engineering is to take our land and keep our water on our site so it no longer goes onto their site. And that's a benefit for them as well. It's not that we're going to be throwing water onto their site because that's not going to be allowed. When we put in our engineering plans, it should alleviate some of the problems that they're having right now. So again, that's one of the other, you know, upsides to it. And I will say that, you know, with the variance on the rear car entry, we, obviously, we got rid of the impervious there, but we're also keeping the buffer because, again, talking to the builder, people want a backyard. They don't want their, you know, come in their backyard, you know, in an alleyway and then go into their house. That's not what they want. So this is a unique townhome subdivision that will actually have a buffer with trees and a backyard for people to enjoy if they choose to do that.
I have one more comment, question for you, please, sir. You mentioned that there are storm water management facilities on the site plan. Unfortunately, this site plan is well beyond my ability to visually see.
It's down by North Expressway. Everything flows down to North Expressway. There's a storm water at the very bottom there. So we're moving all the water down that way through the storm water management system. So that's the way it will be engineered.
I noticed as I drove past, through the trees, you could see certainly a drop of elevation.
Right.
And that it seems to collect back in there and may have effect along Highway 19 depending on the volume of the rain. So again, I'm glad it's there. It's just I can't notice it on the site.
Yeah, and part of the, you know, the engineering is they will make sure that that doesn't, you know, doesn't leave our property unless it's supposed to leave our property in a certain amount of time depending on how it's engineered, correct?
I have another issue that, if I can, the commissioners are okay with me making my comments. I noticed that coming off of Highway 19, have you already obtained a curb cut to put your driveway in there on 1941 through Georgia DOT?
No, we have not done that.
You haven't applied for that?
No, that would happen during engineering.
And if you do apply for that, would you consider putting in a Dcel lane and an Excel lane? Because the traffic coming and going from there will have to be...
That would make sense on that road because...
It's not shown on the site plan.
Okay, we'll get that amended. It would make sense there because it does get pretty...
And that, I had a question, too, about that. Mary Louise, sorry, I haven't used my magnifying glass. This is tiny type. On Old Atlanta Road, I think that would need an Excel lane headed south. I know when I was trying to get out of there the other day, it's site distances and speed are a factor. Is that a county road, Steve? Okay.
I mean, that's a two-lane road over there. That's pretty... I mean, but again, you know, your recommendation. Again, I'm not there all the time.
I've driven that one or two times.
Yeah.
Coming out of that drive specifically, it was more dicey for me.
Okay, yeah.
Sorry.
Thank you. Any more questions for the applicant? Okay, we thank you very much. Is there any comments, further comments by members of the commission?
Well, I mean, I like, I've got to admit, I like David's recommendation following the ordinance. And not from what I'm reading here, you know, I would love to have seen a elevation view. And of course, I know you're trying to keep costs low, but I'm trying to envision what this would look like. And looking again, you know, that entrance coming off of 1941, that, to me, is more of a public area. And I was imagining that, how would that be managed for people coming in and wanting to use the fire pit? Or the dog park, you know, might not even be a resident there. You know, just hearing the concerns from there. But I mean, David, I think is exactly right with, you know, doesn't... That's the requirements and you either meet them or you ask for a variance and you have a good explanation as to why. And I can understand some of them, but that's all I've got to say.
You'll need to vote, however, on each of these separates, these separate applications, of course.
Yes, of course, right. A point, Madam Chair?
Yes.
And back to David Newton. If we approve the flume, what does that do for the zoning portion? Or if we denied one and, I mean, I know the flume, the flume has to go with, got to be done first.
Under our ordinance, a rezoning application that's submitted that is not compliant with the flume must have and be accompanied by an application to amend the flume. And that must be approved before you consider the rezoning application.
Okay.
So if you were to approve the flume, then you would have approved the flume and that doesn't mean you have to approve the rezoning or the variance.
Yes.
If your, if your recommendation is to deny the flume, then ultimately that renders, because that is a condition precedent to the rezoning, then by definition, that's going to moot the rezoning and variance application.
Are there any more comments from the commissioners?
The first flume amendment there, 25-01FLUM, is the larger parcel.
And we will have to do each one of them separately.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, then I will...
Make a motion that we approve the application 25-01FLUM.
We have a motion to approve 25-01FLUM? Is there a second?
I will second that.
We have a second? All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. That has passed. We have a motion on application 25-02FLUM.
It's the smaller northern parcel that is basically shaped like a square. Just basically the same intent.
Well, I'll make the motion to approve 25-02FLUM.
We have a motion to approve 25-02FLUM? Do we have a second? I have a second. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Who was the second member?
Miss Harwick. Okay, that moves us on to application 25-02Z.
And again, this is the larger, the two parcels going to R6 for townhomes.
And David, going back, I see that your reason for denial was impervious and... that your reason for denial was impervious and, and, and the amenities aspect.
Yes, sir. Uh, a couple of things like that, that don't meet the basic R6 regulations, not counting the things they asked for a variance for.
Okay. Then I will make, uh, a motion to deny application 25-02Z.
We have a motion to deny application, I lost it, 25-02Z. Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll, I'll second.
We have a second? All in favor, please raise your hand.
Yeah, sorry.
That passes. Now we move to application 25-03Z.
Likewise, the same zoning, the smaller parcel.
Then I make the same motion to deny application 25-03Z.
We have a motion to deny application 25-03Z. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second? All in favor, please raise your hand. No opposition, 100%.
Since the rezoning has been recommended for denial, uh, it is probably not necessary for you to vote on variances from requirements in that zoning district.
Would that be no action on 25-03Z?
That's correct. They're essentially mooted, because until you vote to rezone, there's nothing to vary.
It takes us to case number 11. Update to official zoning map of Spalding County per Appendix 4, zoning article 23, section 2302.
I'm sorry. This will go in front of the commis, likewise, this is a recommendation, final decision by the commissioners on February 27th. They like to see building elevations, so. Sorry.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I did read the, um, the case into the record. Update of official zoning map of Spalding County per Appendix 4, zoning article 23, section 2302.
Thank you. Is there, is any staff report or any information you'd like to share?
Standard practice. I don't think it was this past year due to the high turnover rate in the office, but, uh, periodically through the year, we have quite a few rezonings. We, uh, re-adopt the zoning map, uh, by the planning commission and board of commissioners to reflect what has changed in the past year. As I said, it was not done for 2024, so I have listed there the various rezonings that were approved in 2024. And your map you have printed out, of course, there'll be a larger copy once approved in the office, uh, reflects these. There was quite a few, there was several of them in, uh, early 2024. The vast majority of them were the Sunnyside rezonings from where it became unincorporated and had to go with, uh, Spalding County zonings. And you had a couple of, uh, rezonings this past fall. So this new map you have a printout of, thanks to our wonderful GIS department for doing this quickly, uh, now reflects those 2024 zonings.
Do I have a motion from the members?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? All in favor, raise your right hand. The motion carries. And then we have the last item.
So last item, Madam Chair, is the consideration of approval of the December 5, 2024 Planning Commission's minutes.
I make a motion to approve the December 5, 2024 Planning Commission minutes.
A motion has been made to approve the minutes of the December 5, 2024 meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second on that.
The second?
Yes.
Everybody in favor, raise your right hand.
Do I need to recuse myself?
Motion is made and approved.
Yeah, 'cause I, we, we, I wasn't here.
If you don't vote, we don't have a quorum to approve the minutes.
So all we're doing is approving the minutes as we see it.
Okay, I'll, I'll just vote noted, but I wasn't here.
I wasn't either.
I was only one hand. I thought I made a motion to approve.
That concludes our agenda for tonight.
Madam Chair, the, the, the other two items are the report of the director, I haven't talked about, all right? And the report of the commissioners. Any comments from the commissioners?
Well, I just, I apologize for, for maybe asking a lot of questions, um, trying to, to learn, and I appreciate the help, so thank you.
Last item on the agenda this evening is adjournment.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second? We have a second to that motion. All in favor, raise your right hand. We are adjourned.